Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular Titusville City Council meeting of November 26, 2019 at 6:30 PM. I'll call this meeting to order. We do have a quorum. Clerk, please read the procedures for public speaking comment.
Individuals wishing to speak on public and non-public hearing agenda items must complete a sign-up card and present it to the clerk prior to the item being introduced. Those wishing to speak on quasi-judicial public hearings must complete a sign-up card and sign the oath. Sign-up and oath cards are available on the table in the council chamber. Individuals wishing to speak on non-agenda items may do so under petitions and requests from the public present. This opportunity is offered twice in the meeting, and individuals may speak at either the first or second petitions and requests, but not both. No sign-up card is required. And finally, citizens shall not comment on any issue more than once during the meeting. All comments except petitions and requests must address the pending issue, and citizens will be given three minutes to speak on all agenda items.
Thank you, Clerk. In lieu of an education, a invocation. A moment of silence, please join me. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
And first item of business is-
Mayor and council, before we get on to the agenda, I'd like to make a couple recommendations. Staff would like to withdraw item 9E. And at the applicant's request, we would also like to withdraw item 10D.
Are we looking at just withdrawing then?
Withdrawn both, yeah. Staff felt that the item 9E was not ready for prime time, and 10D is at the applicant's request.
So we need a motion to withdraw item 9E and 10?
D.
E.
D.
D.
D is in dog.
Second.
9E, 10?
D.
D.
Motion, I have a second.
Could we identify those items for the public, so they understand which items are being withdrawn?
Yes, sir. Item 9D is ordinance correction, ordinance 42-219, microbreweries and brew pubs. And item 9D is small-scale comprehensive plan map amendment, SSA number 3-2019.
That was 10D.
10D and 9E.
9E.
Yeah.
That's not what you said. You said nine.
One is microbreweries and the other one would be Willa Creek.
Yeah.
Right. We understand.
We understand.
We got it now?
Got it now.
Okay. All right, back to-
So we'll still need a motion and get-
Oh, sorry. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, like sign, passes unanimously. Okay, the minutes, need approval.
I'd move to approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting on October 22, 2019.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. I see. Was that light for me for? Thank you. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, like sign, passes unanimously. Special recognitions and presentations.
Yes, sir. I'd like to read for the record the letters of appreciation that were received for our employees. From media services, Curtis Corman; water resources, Ashley Smith; from water and sewer field operations, Garth Bryan; Jesse Burlow; Eddie DeLeon; Scott Devine; Peter Fred; and David Straub.
Next item, please.
Yes, sir. This is item 6A, and it's the City Titusville Police and Fire Pension Board Appointment Trustee. And staff is requesting that you confirm Douglas Baker's reappointment as a member of the Police and Fire Pension Board of Trustees for a four-year period, term expiring on November 30, 2023.
Member Jordan, you are up first.
I was gonna make the recommendation. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay. I move that we confirm Douglas Baker's reappointment as a member of the Police and Fire Pension Board of Trustees for a four-year term expiring on November 30, 2023.
I have a motion and a second. I would just comment that Mr. Baker is a, I've known him for many years, I'm sure most of you have, and he does a fine job, and I appreciate him doing this again, I guess. So with that, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, like sign, passes unanimously. Next.
Next item is 6B, and this is the Titusville Environmental Commission. The terms of regular members Alex Chamberlain, Michael Majak, and James Yance expire on November 30, 2019. Regular members Chamberlain, Majak, and Yance have expressed their willingness and desire to continue to serve on this board as regular members for another three-year term, expiring on November 30, 2022. There are currently no other applications on file for your consideration.
Member Jordan?
Yes, sir. I move that we approve Mr. and Ms. Alex Chamberlain, Michael Majak, and James Yance.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I would like to make that second. Sorry, sorry, Dan. But I believe Mr. Chamberlain has also expressed a desire to resign at some point, probably in the spring. He did meet Mr. Lee the other day, and Mr. Lee is still, still would like to be on the TEC.
At that point in time?
Yes.
Okay, well, we don't have to, you're here today, you're just giving us the information.
I'm just giving you the information.
Thank you very much. And now, your second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, like sign, passes unanimously. Next item, sir.
Next item is not, correction, 6C, Community Redevelopment Agency. Member-at-large Kurt Leedy submitted his letter of resignation. His term expires on September 30, 2020. There were two applications on file for your consideration, Dr. Greg Aker and Frank Beckman. Upon further discovery, Mr. Beckman is not qualified to apply for this board, so you now have one applicant for consideration, and that is Dr. Aker. And there are currently no other applications on file. So on this item, sir, you'll need to accept Mr. Leedy's resignation and an appointment.
Okay. Member Jordan?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor and council, I move that we accept the resignation of Member-at-large Kurt Leedy with a term to expire on September 30, 2020, and appoint Mr. Greg Aker.
Doctor, if you will.
Did I say doctor or mister?
You said mister.
I don't think he cares either, but Doctor Greg Aker.
Hey, he worked for that.
Oh, yes, yeah.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any comment?
No, that's what I was gonna do.
Okay.
I would like to make a comment.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Wait a minute, get some more.
Go ahead. May I want something? But I just want to say that it's an honor to have you here and be willing to serve on the CRA. I've known Greg, we graduated high school together. So that was about 15 years ago, I think.
15 years.
So, what are you laughing about?
Yeah, right.
But anyway, I'm just honored that you are willing to reserve, and I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
It's funny, I think I served with you on the CRA 15 years ago. No, not that many years, but-
Yeah, you weren't.
And I'll echo that. I sure appreciate you coming back. You always did a fine job, and I'm sure you'll continue with that. So with that, Member Jordan, you have other comments, Mike?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, of course, I want to echo that too, and I'm very pleased that he said yes, and very pleased that the council were voting the affirmative for Dr. Aker. So, thank you.
You got it. Okay.
And can I be a smart aleck?
Uh-oh.
What do you mean, can you?
15 years ago?
No, you cannot be.
No, you can't be.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, correct?
Yes.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, like sign, passes unanimously. Congratulations. Next one, sir?
Item 6D is the Municipal Code Enforcement Board. William Kilpatrick currently serves on the Board of Adjustment and Appeals as an alternate member-at-large, with a term to expire on July 31, 2021. He has expressed his willingness and desire to serve on the Municipal Code Enforcement Board as an alternate member, open classification, with an unexpired term to expire on October 31, 2020. If Mr. Kilpatrick is not appointed to the Municipal Code Enforcement Board, he will continue to serve on the Board of Adjustment and Appeals. Your second applicant, Mr. Frank Beckman, is not qualified to serve on this board, so you have one application, and that's William Kilpatrick, for your consideration.
Did he indicate a preference on that?
He has requested to go on the code enforcement board.
Okay. Member Nelson?
And I tried to meet with him last week, and he was not present. I don't know if he's present tonight. He was not present last time. So if he's present tonight, I'd like to hear, I'd like to meet you. We'd like to meet you. Can he come, have him come up?
Yes, absolutely. Sir, would you like to come up to the podium, please?
Can we impose on you?
I wouldn't like to, I would.
Okay.
We don't bite, don't worry.
Okay. My name is William Kilpatrick. It's a difficult name to pronounce, took me a long time. Just after high school, I learned how to finally get it.
That was 15 years ago? And I understand you were working out at the Space Center?
I spent 20 years out there, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And now you want the code enforcement board?
Yes.
Okay.
I believe my experience out there would cover the code enforcement once I learned what the job was.
Okay.
But I was a supervisor, then a manager, and a quality assurance inspector out there for my 20 years, so I would do this quite a bit.
I understand it now. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Stay there on second place. Member Jordan, you have any comments or questions? We've got your light on.
Yeah, actually, I have a comment about the previous thing that we did, but what did you do at the Space Center?
I began out there as a quality assurance inspector-
Okay.
-on the space shuttle program. In fact, I retired about the same time when the space shuttle program ended, 2011, I retired, December 31st. But I was basically an inspector out there, got into management, supervision, and then management. And I spent my last, I believe it was three to four years as a manager in procurement quality assurance.
As a contractor, correct?
With NASA.
With NASA, okay.
With NASA, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, never worked for a contractor.
There's nothing wrong with a contractor, you know.
There is nothing wrong. Without them, we wouldn't have had a job.
Right. All right, thank you, sir.
Okay.
He was a contractor.
That's right.
I was not a contractor.
He was, he was.
I was.
Oh, okay.
That's why you said that's not so bad.
I'm not sorry you were a contractor. Without you folks, we wouldn't have had a job.
Appreciate that. Okay, thank you.
Member Stokel?
I just have a clarification question for staff. If we appoint one alternate member tonight, we still will have one alternate opening.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Member Nelson?
So can I move to approve Mr.?
You can be seated, sir.
Let me make sure I say this right. Mr.?
Kirk.
Kirk Patrick.
Kilpatrick.
Kilpatrick. You may have to stick around for a couple of years.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, like sign, passes unanimously. Congratulations, sir. Next item, sir?
Item 6E is Planning and Zoning Commission. Robin Taylor currently serves as an alternate member with a term to expire on January 31, 2020. She has expressed her willingness and desire to serve on this board as a regular member, with an unexpired term to expire on January 31, 2021. And if not appointed as a regular member, she will continue to serve as an alternate member. Alternate member Nicole Suzanne Noel Copeland currently serves as an alternate member, but does not wish to be considered as a regular member. And one additional applicant we received yesterday is a Susan Idenson? I can't pronounce that one at all.
Idenson.
Idenson.
Am I doing it right?
You have the hard, you have the hard copy on the dais in your folder. Because this application was received late, you can't consider this. However, you can table the item to allow the time for that applicant to be considered.
Member Nelson?
I was gonna say, Ms. Idenson is here. If anybody has any questions for, she's been part of our Rotary Group for many, many years. I've known her for many years, probably 15. She is here. It'd be good to have her come forward and at least introduce herself.
All right, let me just go to Member Jordan and see what his comments are.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I was trying to get back to our previous one, because one of the things we said we wanted was for any applicant to have a time to come up and speak, and we did not let Dr. Aker say anything. So I just want to make sure-
He didn't need to, really.
And that was the point, but I wanted to make sure that we were gonna do that for each person, so I didn't know if he wanted to say anything or not, so.
Did you want to say anything, Dr. Aker?
I did.
Okay.
Greg Aker, 1455 Echo Drive, Titusville. I am thrilled at the thought of having a chance to be back on the CRA. I look forward to working with all of you.
We're thrilled to have you, Doctor.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. All right, where were we?
We were talking about having Ms. Sue come forward-
Oh, yeah, would you like to come forward?
...introduce herself to the members that don't know her.
Good evening, council members. My name is Sue Idenson. I've been a resident of Titusville since 1992. Most people probably know the house that was renovated on the corner here of South Street and Indian River. That's my home. And I've been very interested in zoning issues, and particularly issues as it relates to, you know, not only attracting businesses to Titusville, but properly growing the base of people that we have here, and making sure that we have affordable housing and those kinds of things. I have served on many boards. I worked for Governor Childs for four years as the Director of International Trade and Economic Development for the state of Florida. I ran a women's clinic in Orlando, Florida, for 15 years. I also ran an institute in Singapore for four years. So I have quite a broad experience, and I love making sure the community is healthy, and that's what I want. And if there's anything I can do to contribute to that, I'm more than willing to do it. Thank you.
One second, ma'am. Member Jordan, you have a question?
Yes, it's actually a question of the process, because as you said, she, her application came late. Ms. Taylor actually is alternate member now, and she has desired to be the permanent member.
Yes, sir.
So we would still have to, if we wanted to look at her at all, we would have to table this whole thing, or could we do it?
Yes, sir. I was about to suggest that, no, seriously.
Okay.
Yes, that would be the proper protocol at this point, because our application was actually, is not, was late. So, so in order to allow both of them to come forward and say something, it would be proper to table this until the next meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Would you like to do that, sir?
Yeah, I move that we table item, what is that, E?
6E.
6E, until the next meeting.
Second. I have a motion and a second. I see a light on. Member Stokel?
I was just curious if Ms. Taylor was here to talk as well.
I don't see her here. I do recognize-
Yeah. Okay, that's all. Thanks.
Can I?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Taylor was going to meet with me last week, and she did get a nail in her car. She's been here before, so I felt, I talked to her over the phone about her desire to be on Planning and Zoning as a regular member. She was a regular member, and when her term expired, we gave that slot to Joe Richardson, in part, I think, because he had helped write the code in the 80s. But she still wants to be involved in it.
Okay, petitions and requests from the public?
We have a vote on that.
Oh, we didn't get the vote on that one? I thought we did. Anybody want to make a motion?
We needed a vote.
You got a motion and a second already? All right, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, like sign, passes unanimously. Thank you. Now, petitions and requests, is there anybody that wishes to come forward?
We're waiting for Stan.
Michael Majak, Alpine Lane, Titusville. I was listening to the BBC News headlines this morning, and it was a rather bleak outlook for our climate, as greenhouse gas emission targets were once again missed. According to this year's annual report from the United Nations Environmental Protection, or Environmental Program, annual emissions gap report is where it comes from. What followed was a clear and sobering statement. Government commitments made so far to reduce greenhouse gases will not be enough to restrict global warming to the 1.5 degree C degree limit that was agreed to under the Paris Climate Accord. I want to make sure I read this quote directly. World leaders have squandered so much time taking action necessary to combat climate change that whatever is required now is going to be rapid and unprecedented cuts in greenhouse gas emissions if we're to avert the intensifying effects of climate change. In order to cap global warming at 1.5 degrees C above pre-industrial age temperatures, we need to cut global greenhouse gas emissions by 7.6 percent annually. You can contrast that with the 1.5 percent increase we've had annually over the last decade. So that's a 9 percent change that we have to change this year. And that 9 percent will be every year after that. So now, that means local leadership, your leadership, on clean energy is more important than ever. Mayor Buddy Dyer, for example, has signed on to the Sierra Club's Mayors for 100% Clean Energy, which I hope you will also sign, Mayor Johnson. Right now, our current path indicates we will see global temperatures rise by the year 2100 by more than 3.5 degrees C, and it could be as high as 5. It bears repeating, rapid and unprecedented cuts in carbon pollution- cuts in carbon pollution because we are currently on track for a 3.5 to 5 degree rise by the end of this century. Titusville needs to do its part. We can close some of these emission gaps by converting to 100% clean energy. We can also convert to solar powered cars and trucks and our fleet. The whole fleet can be converted. This is what Buddy Dyer is doing over in Orlando right now. I heard a presentation by them. It's absolutely fabulous. We should actually get them here to talk. Lastly, and the most important, it's something you can do now, is there should be no new housing built without photovoltaic array on top of the roof. It lowers the energy costs of the people that buy the house. It provides power backup when there's weather conditions that we tend to have frequently, weather storms. So can I have one more minute?
Yes, sir. You may. Wait a second now.
Thank you.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Go ahead, sir.
All right. The temperature, the changes that have been made over the last 10 years. If we were to, I know I've tried to describe doubling to you before, but just imagine if you could move something with an effort of costing $1 on the first day, $2 on the second day, $4 on the third day, and it just keeps doubling for a month, do you have any idea how many dollars it would take by the 30th day?
A lot.
It's a billion 73,860,000. That's what doubling does in 30 days. This is what's happening with the ocean. The ocean's rising, the temperatures are rising, and it's happening at a doubling rate. So the more we put in now, the less it's gonna cost later. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I think we have a question or? Go right ahead.
We have a question and a comment. I sat next to a gentleman who is a climate scientist at Florida Atlantic University. And we got into a discussion of what it would take and what are, what's the science behind it. And one of the things he said to me is, this isn't politics, this is science. This is how much carbon do we have in the air? How do we get it out? Because if we have carbon in the air, we're letting more heat through.
That's right.
So I understand what you're saying. And I will say, this is not politics, this is science. This is what he said to me. Not politics. I don't care if you're Republican, Democrat, whatever. This is science. But I think for some of the changes that you're talking about, we need the TEC to come back to us with these are the ideas that we want to implement. And I think that was the whole purpose of the TEC. As far as your solar energy, you've got a solar energy guy there. Bill Young.
Yes.
Yeah.
But we have yet to hook up the panels at the guest, the?
Are they hooked up?
Visitor center. No, they're not hooked up.
No, they're operational, sir.
They are?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Because our solar expert was there last week and they weren't connected.
Well, any, I would say, anything that you guys see that we can do within the city, I think it's sort of incumbent upon you to bring it back before us.
Right.
Please.
We will do so. Thank you.
I think that's a great idea. Everybody agree with that? If you will, sir, when you do, when you can. Member Stokel?
Michael, another thing, because I looked into the solar powered vehicles too. But I also, I haven't researched it in depth, but I was also seeing some local governments were having some issues with them as well. So when you guys are discussing that, if you could look at the pros and cons, because I'm very interested in it, but I also don't want to potentially have more issues. So if we can try to mitigate some of those.
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else on petitions and requests? Last chance. Well, not the last. You can do it later, too, but last, last time this round. Okay. Consent agenda, sir?
Yes, sir. Council, would any council member like to pull any of the consent agenda items, A through G?
I see no one.
Clerk, do you have any cards for consent?
Uh, no, sir.
And with the council's permission, I'll read for the record, A through G. Consent agenda item 8A, approve the FY 2019 year-end budget adjustments. Consent agenda item 8B, approve advisability for staff to review and make recommendations for amendments to the signed code as needed to bring the code in compliance with Reed v. Town of Gilbert, a recent Supreme Court decision related to criteria for signs. Consent agenda item 8C, approve work order number three to contract CN 16B 039, annual stormwater and piping installation in the amount of $244,215 to SDV Services LLC for the repair and replacement of stormwater pipes and structures and pond evacuation at La Cita Golf Course. Additionally, approve the attached budget amendment, approve an increase in the authorized annual amount of the contract to $600,000, and authorize the city manager to execute the contract increase. Consent agenda item 8D, approve the successor agreement between the IAFF Local 2445 and the City of Titusville effective 1 October 2019 to September 30th, 2022. Consent agenda item 8E, staff recommends approval of Resolution 53 2019 of the City of Titusville, amending Resolution 18 2013, which adopted a qualified 401A money purchase defined contribution plan for eligible employees by amending the matching investing provisions of the plan. Consent agenda item 8F, authorize mayor to sign the 2019 Tree City USA application for certification. Consent agenda item 8G, approve the attached budget amendment and the award of a contract to Don Wood Incorporated in the amount of $34,134.68 to replace existing fuel dispenser, sumps, and hoses at the municipal marina with electronic dispenser, sumps, hoses, and authorize the city manager to execute the contract. That's A through H. And there is a resolution, so you'll need a roll call vote, sir.
Okay. I have someone. Member Jordan?
Yes.
G, I'm sorry.
A through G.
Yes. Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve consent agenda items 8A through G.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I just need clarity. I was just reading this thing again and I'm a little confused about 8C. It says additionally approve the attached budget amendment, approve an increase in the authorized annual amount. I don't understand that. So every year it's gonna be additional amount of $600,000? Is that what I'm reading?
So just for this year, because we already had, this is our third work order of the year, so we need to increase their annual amount to 600,000 contracts for half a million. So to cut, to put this work into, we need to raise the annual, this year's contract amount to 600,000.
Okay.
So it's not a recurring. It's a one-time raise for the year.
All right. That's the way it sounded. It was like every year it's gonna be an increase of 600,000.
No, this is actually the last year this contract is.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? If not, do a roll call vote, please, clerk.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Next item, please.
Next item is 9A, which is ordinance number 38 2019. An ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, amending the code of ordinances, amending Chapter 3 Fire Alarms, Section 3-11 definitions, by amending the definitions of cancellation and false fire alarm, and by amending Section 312, duty of owner or less of premises regarding maintenance of alarm systems, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, effective date, exemptions, and incorporation into the code.
And council, in your agenda that was published, the clean ordinance was published, we've provided council the strike through and underline portion in your packet for your consideration. And this is item 9A, public hearing for ordinance 38 2019. At the May 28, 2019, regular council meeting, the Fire Department received advisability to amend ordinance 30-2011 Fire Alarms. Staff is recommending amending Sections 3-11 definitions, specifically cancellations and false alarms, and 3-12, duty of owner, leasing, and premise, Section E regarding maintenance of fire alarms. Staff is recommending changing the definition of cancellation to allow the occupant to officially cancel the Fire Department's response only if a notice occurs prior to the Fire Department units being dispatched rather than prior to arriving on scene. This recommended change will allow the Fire Department to properly continue to the scene to investigate fire alarms once they're dispatched and determined a cause. There have been many cases where the occupant will cancel the Fire Department without actually being on scene or prior to properly investigating the cause and effect to avoid punitive action due to the false alarm definition. The changes to false alarm definition is the deletion of disruption of telephone circuit beyond the control of the fire alarm operator or its agents verified by written communications by the telephone company. The deletion is due to technology being outdated and no longer used in modem alarm systems. Yet, the change to Section 2, duty of owner, leasing, or of premises E, all alarm systems shall be properly maintained. Systems malfunctioning due to a lack of proper maintenance shall not be grounds for excuse, an excuse to false alarm. Staff recommends replacing the current faulty with the phrase "lack of proper." And Chief Woodward is available to answer any questions that you may have on this public hearing on ordinance 38 2019.
Thank you, sir. Chief, are there any comments that you want to make, first off?
No, sir. In regards to the recommended changes, the majority of the rationale behind our false alarm ordinance pertains to alarm systems that are required to be installed due to Florida Fire Prevention Code. Florida Fire Prevention Code identifies certain occupancies such as medical facilities, educational facilities, things that are high probability of loss of life. They're required to have a monitored fire alarm system. In regards to that monitored fire alarm system, there really is no such thing as a cancellation prior to being dispatched. Because if the alarm system is functioning properly, as soon as that alarm is triggered and activated, the alarm company automatically notifies our dispatch, who in turn will dispatch our units to the scene. Regardless whether we receive a cancellation from property owner or whatever, we still provide response to that facility just to determine typically what is, what we classify as a false fire alarm is a faulty piece of equipment, something that's malfunctioning in that fire alarm system. Being that it's required to have that fire alarm system by code, we like to work with the business owner to ensure if there is a faulty piece of equipment, we work with them to try and fix that piece of equipment to prevent it and also to ensure the safety of the occupants in that building. So this is not being done with an intent to generate additional revenue for the city because we're one of the only cities that if we happen to have a repeat offender, say, of false alarm that, you know, is determined that they have a faulty piece of equipment in their system, we actually will allow them to utilize any type of civil penalty that they may have occurred or accrued with the city. If they put that money back into their system to repair that faulty piece of equipment, we waive any kind of further penalty from that. So we're one of the only municipalities that do that. And our ultimate goal is just to ensure that the alarms are functioning as they're required to by statute and by Florida Fire Prevention Code.
Thank you, sir. Comments from council? First one is Member Jordan.
Thank you, sir, and thank you, Chief. He and I talked right before the meeting because I was really concerned about this one. My mind was on burglar alarms and not fire alarms. And there is a huge difference between false alarms when it comes down to a burglar alarm. I thought that once they are dispatched, then I've got a problem. I'm gonna have to pay if there's three false alarms. But that's with the burglar side. My business actually just had this, spent about $5,000 on repairing a part of my fire system because it is monitored and it was faulty. And of course, we want to save the building at all costs. So we gotta make sure those things happen. As he explained to me, once they are dispatched, they really need to come out to the building to make sure that there's no problem out there and for me to call. Because normally what I would do with a burglar alarm, I would, I'd get a call from ADP. I would look at my cameras to make sure everything is okay. Then I'll tell them, don't dispatch the police. This is totally different from that. This is fire alarm. And once they're dispatched, they need to come out to your building and make sure everything is okay. So for all business owners out here, this is a really good thing for us. And I wholeheartedly support what he's trying to do. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Member Stokel?
Thank you. Okay, so I just want to clarify. If someone were to call and cancel before being dispatched, then you guys will not come out and there's no penalty. Is that correct?
That is correct. But if it's a required system that's truly monitored, a resident, like for example, a residential system through ADT or something like that, typically they're gonna contact the property owner first.
Okay.
But in something such as an educational facility or a healthcare facility, they're not gonna contact a key holder or a property owner first. They're automatically gonna dispatch us out. So there shouldn't be any, there shouldn't be correspondence prior to that.
Okay. And then, do you know what the current penalty is now? And does that penalty go up if they are, say, a repeat offender?
Correct. If they have, if they have three false alarms, which a documented false alarm, like I said, is gonna be a problem with their alarm panel, a faulty smoke detector, something that is generating that repeated false alarm. Burning popcorn in a microwave and smoking out and setting off a smoke detector does not constitute a false alarm.
Okay.
Because that system actually operated properly. It activated when smoke entered the detector and notified us. The only time that a false alarm penalty is gonna be assessed is whenever we have repeat offenses. And that is three times within a nine-month period and it's $290 for commercial occupancy.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
I see no other lights. If there are no other questions, I'll open the public hearing. Clerk, do we have cards on this item?
Uh, no, sir.
I will close the public hearing. Counsel, any further discussion on this item? I have one light there. Member Nelson?
I was just going to make the motion if nobody else had comments. Move to approve ordinance number 38-2019, fire alarms.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
This will be a roll call, Mayor.
Yeah, it's a roll call. I just remembered that. Roll call, please.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Next item, sir?
Next item is 9B, which is ordinance number 39 2019. An ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, amending the code of ordinances to modify expiration dates for conditional use permits by amending Section 3477, revocation of conditional use permits, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, and effective date and incorporation into the code.
After review on the November 20th, 2019, Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval with additional language that the applicant is continuously working towards completion so that the construction is completed within 18 months. The vote was 4-1. On October 8, 2019, city approved advisability to amend the code to allow conditional use permits to remain active as long as the associated building permit is active. The proposed ordinance does not change the expiration dates of the conditional use permits per se, but does permit construction authorized by a CUP prior to the expiration of the CUP as long as the building permit remains active. Mr. Bisaka is available to answer any questions that you may have on this public hearing of ordinance 39 2019.
First, do you have any comments, Mr. Bisaka? Okay, I have, I have no light. I thought there was a light there. All right. It went away. Please, go ahead.
And looking at this, and I did talk to Richard and Scott about this, I like the idea of continuously working toward completion because I don't want somebody waiting five and a half months and then all of a sudden doing a scurry of activity. But I don't like the idea of the construction having to be completed within 18 months because I think depending on the project, it may not be able to be completed within that 18 months. On the other hand, I do want to see progress being made. I don't want to see people waiting until it's time for an inspection every six months. I don't want to see people waiting until it's time for an inspection every six months and now let's run and get an inspection and... So, I have no problem with the language.
Let me see if I can help you a little bit. I have an excerpt here from the Florida Building Code that we follow.
Okay.
And the Section 105.4.1.3 says, "Work shall be considered to be in active progress when the permit has received an approved inspection within 180 days." That's what the Florida Building Code says.
Okay.
And that is their definition of continuously moving forward. Now, the, let me tell you what the required inspections are. They have to be, for a building, a foundation inspection, a framing inspection, a sheathing inspection, a roofing inspection, and the final inspection.
Right.
If there's electrical, there's also specific inspections for electrical, plumbing, mechanical, and gas. But in the event that someone could indeed finish the roof after waiting five months and then finish it in the last month, the Florida Building Code would allow that. So, my suggestion is that, I don't know that we want to be inconsistent with the Florida Building Code, and Section 6 of our code specifically calls out that they must continue to move forward. The language is that a permit under which no work is commenced within six months after issuance shall expire by limitations and shall expire regardless after the expiration date of one year from the date of issuance. However, one or more extensions of a permit by 90, of 90 days as allowed under the Florida Building Code may be granted upon approval of the building official. Permits may be renewed by the building official for a period of up to one year. So, the approval shall only be granted for permits where an applicant is continuously working toward completion of such work.
Okay, so it's covered in...
In Section 6. Now, if you'd like us to repeat some of this or say, as required in Section 664, we can certainly reference that.
That would be good.
Okay. Because I think that that's the intent...
Yeah.
Of the planning and zoning is to be consistent with this language that's already in the code.
That would...
They may just not have been aware of the specific section.
That would be good because that really puts people on notice that this is what we expect.
Very good. Member Stokel?
Thank you. All right, adding on to that, I just want to make sure I have this correct. A conditional use permit is issued within six months. They have to have a building permit inspection or no?
No, ma'am, that's not what it says. What this says is that the building, the CUP will expire four years from the date that it is issued. If a building permit is required, which is not true of all conditional use permits...
Okay.
But if a building permit is required, then the building permit must be issued, and then they must get an inspection every six months until they complete the building permit. That's the state code.
So, are we saying that they can sit there and do nothing for four years and right up until the four years is about to hit, they can get their building permit inspection then?
They can get their permit, and then they have to move forward with...
Okay.
Yes, ma'am, I think you understand it.
I, yeah, that kind of bothers me because I don't want to be sitting there for four years without progress. I'm okay if right after that and then, you know, extending it, okay, they did the foundation permit, and now they're going to be working on the frame as long as we're making that progress, but to sit there for four years kind of bothers me. That's kind of where I'm at.
Member Jordan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think what I heard you say, Ms. Bisaka, we need to get rid of the wording that was added by the P and Z of continuously working towards completion and just referencing the code, the Florida code. Is that what I heard?
Yes, sir, and I think that that really was their intent.
Mm-hmm.
Because the Florida Code says that they must be in active progress.
Right.
So, I do believe that that was their intent. This is just, so if I were to either go to the Florida Building Code or Section 66-64 of the, of the city code, that talks, that references the Florida Building Code as well.
Okay, and I think that's what we need to do for sure. And I, most builders, they want to get the thing done as quickly as possible, you know, so I think it'd be a one-off if something happens. Of course, I'm thinking of one incident where things just got ahead, but we've got someone who wants to finish this thing, and I think based on the wording of what we have plus the addition of the Florida Code, I think that would definitely take care of the challenge that we have. You know, I'm just looking at the wording, and I'm going to assume that you're correct that the P and Z just didn't know those words that was in the code because if it's 18 months and it really is the 19th month, then what are they supposed to do after the 18th month? Come to us, you know, go back to P and Z, or what are they supposed to, go back to the permit department? I don't think you're going to do that.
Right, and what I see is that we would have an internal inconsistency. We would have a section that says they're allowed to proceed...
Right.
And then we would have a section that said they had to stop. That would be very challenging for staff to deal with.
Absolutely.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Vice Mayor?
So, to continue, the determination of working towards, or as Member Jordan just mentioned, they go 18 months, and then, you know, then the 19th month, they're not there. The inspections are part of what determines if they're continuing to move forward successfully?
That is correct.
And so, just to clarify for me, we get to, again, Member Jordan's point, they get to the 18th month and they're not quite done. The next step is if they're moving forward, we can keep moving?
It says that there has to be an inspection every six months.
Okay, so let's just say they get to the 18th month, that's the end of that. Do they start off with an inspection and then every six months thereafter?
Well, I'm going to see if I can say it a different way, and maybe I'll answer your question. The, in, let's just say a building, the first inspection would be the foundation inspection, and then in six months, they're expected to get a framing inspection, and then in six months, they're expected to get the next required inspection. Now, in some cases, if it's a very large building, it may take additional time to go from that one inspection to the next. That's when our inspector goes out there and makes sure that they are indeed moving along because that gives the building official the opportunity to extend that permit. But if for some reason they are not moving along, then the building inspector has, the building official has to make some kind of determination. What we don't want to see is for people to have a half-constructed building that's not completed. That's not to anyone's advantage.
And as I look at this, this is certainly where I was, not to use a pun here, but where I was trying to frame this, was we don't want buildings halfway started. We've seen a few of those in our time here, and I want to make sure that the progress moving forward, that there's an A, a B, a C, and an D. Now, the flip side of that is inspection every six months. Let's just say for whatever reason, and I don't know that that's even possible, but they're ahead of schedule and the framing's done in three months. Do they get an inspection then?
Absolutely. They call us and we schedule an inspection, and as Member Jordan said, most of the time they're in a hurry-up, not the other way around.
Absolutely, absolutely, and that's again why, I have the same concern or one of the concerns that Member Stokel had, but if this is somebody who's really, you know, they're coming before us because they want to get something done, I certainly hope that doesn't become the situation, but as they say, hope is not a method, so I want to make sure we have something in line that says this can't happen.
Well, I can give you one example. We have a development, I won't bother to tell you which one, but it has languished. And the, they were coming up on their six-month inspection time, and the staff went out and said, "Why are we not seeing progress on this?" The answer was DOT had stopped the project because there was a issue with the DOT permit. The building official said, "No, just because DOT said you have to deal with a DOT issue doesn't mean you shouldn't continue to construct." So, the building official said, "You need to finish." And so, we actually went out proactively and said, "Why is it we haven't seen progress here?" And they had misunderstood that the DOT had not really put a stop on the entire project, had just made a comment about the DOT permit. So, we are, we are out there every day looking, and if we don't see progress, we find out why to assist them.
Very good. I see this as beneficial for the developer, and I see it beneficial for us. We're not going to have, you know, lagging buildings and things like that. We're going to continue to get out there, and for the builders, I like the way, or developers, I like the way that they don't have to wait the six months if, you know, we're going to get this thing done. So, thank you.
Member Nelson?
And Peggy, correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is code allows us to withdraw a CUP if the neighborhood has changed at any time.
Yes, they, there, you would have to go through a public process, but if you look on page 194, it says the city council should have the authority to modify or revoke a previously granted conditional use permit, and it lays out how that can happen.
Okay, so the fact that somebody has four years, the conditional use permit is for four years, if at the end, end of two years, staff came to us and said, "We think the character of the neighborhood has changed," we can revoke that permit?
As long as it meets the requirements of the code. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Member Stokel, I see that the city attorney has put his light on, if you don't mind. Sir?
I just wanted to clarify something with Ms. Bisaka.
Hmm?
You were identifying or defining building permits. Understanding at the planning and zoning meeting, there was a concern if someone came in and maybe got a silt fence permit or a dumpster permit or a window box permit, and calling that a building permit in order to extend. So, I just want to clarify, when we define building permit, is it clear which permits that's going to apply?
When I confirmed this with the building official this week, he said that, yes, we go by the stat, by the Florida Building Code, which happens to be Section 110.3 called Required Inspections. And those inspections that I read off to you are the foundation inspection, the framing inspection, that kind of thing. It would not be something minor that would like a dumpster. It would be, if, if the building, let me give you an example. The conditional use permit is for vacant property and that requires that a building is constructed, then it would be that building that would need to be constructed. It would not be putting in landscaping or putting in the driveway, something like that.
Okay, so you don't see a need to clarify that within this ordinance?
Well, Mr. Rice, and I hate to take his thunder since he's sitting here so quietly, did have a suggestion about that, and with his experience, I let him talk and then...
And again, I also wanted to clarify, so the language that was recommended by planning and zoning, the continuously working towards completion, am I to understand that that language does exist in the code?
Yes.
But included here would not be inconsistent, it may be duplicative, but it would not be inconsistent?
That's correct. In fact, I don't think it hurts at all to, to say either that language or to reference the Chapter 664, whatever council wants.
But otherwise...
I think the intent's the same.
It would make it clear to include it here.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Did, Mr. Rice, did you want to speak on this, or is that a...
We have cards for this item, Mayor.
Oh, okay, I get it. I didn't know it was in there. Member Stokel?
Thank you, and a city attorney was kind of alluding to one of my questions. Do we know the number of required inspections that consist of the framing, the roofing? Is it, how many there are?
It is foundation, framing, sheathing, roofing, and final inspection. That's five.
So, five.
Now, there may be, if there's a demolition permit, because there's an existing building they're replacing, that would be a separate permit, but that building permit would be required to actually build because the conditional use permit would not just be the demolition. Now, there's also electrical inspections, there's four different kinds, three kinds of plumbing, three kinds of mechanical, and three kinds of gas. But it would, and that would really depend on the requirement. For instance, if there was an existing building, but it needed, the restaurant needed to go in and get a building permit just to put in a hood, for instance, then that would be the permit, but there's only, that's a very simple thing, and it would be very quick to finish that.
Okay, and I think you clarified that the building inspector could extend a particular type of permit as long as there are...
The building official can, yes, under certain circumstances.
Okay, and then my last question, the building permit process starts 18 months in?
No, you could come in the first day.
I mean, when's the latest? Is it, are we back to the four years?
Yes, ma'am, we're back to the four years.
Okay, which I don't like. Okay, all right.
I see no more lights. I will open the public hearing. Clerk, would you call the card, please? First card?
Yes, sir, we have four cards. The first is Kathleen Perez. I don't, should I just start?
Name and address for the record, ma'am.
Kathleen Perez, 3025 South Washington Avenue.
Thank you.
Now I start?
Yes.
Okay. I'm here tonight because I found out last Wednesday night by watching the video of the Titusville Planning and Zoning Board meeting that the owner of the property adjacent to our home was asking for an extension on a conditional use permit that was issued to Mr. Tretter, the former owner, in April of 2005 for a completely different project. Until that moment, we had no idea that a 14-year-old permit would be used to allow the new owner of the property to circumvent the zoning set in place in 2005. That would have restricted the possible building on that site to a maximum of 50 feet in height, and that only if there were additional setbacks from the property line. An extension on the 14-year-old permit would allow the current owner to build a 100-foot or 10-story building next to our house and that of our neighbors, James and Hannah Parrot, and also the St. Teresa's Catholic Church. I don't have any expertise in city planning and zoning, but it does appear to me that the original CUP states that construction is required to continue this kind of permit. However, no ground has ever been broken on this site for any kind of construction. In the summary of the planning and zoning meeting in which it was noted, the concern is, this is about the one asking for the extension, the concern expressed was that although plans were being developed for the ALF, there was not adequate time to complete the project before the conditional use permit expired. Therefore, the new language, the new owner is asking for the language in the city's code to be changed so that her CUP may be extended yet again. And it's also noted in the summary that to date, this is the only owner that has requested additional time for a CUP, meaning that this change in the, or the only owner who has requested this change in the code. It says also in the same summary, "Current criteria for modification or revocation where there has been no development, construction, or implementation of the conditional use." Under that section, it's mentioned that adverse impacts such as emissions, particulates, noise, or other negative impact might be relevant. Everyone who I know who lives near an assisted living facility mentions the noise of the wailing emergency vehicle sirens at all hours of the day and night. This would impact all of the neighbors near this property. A 50-foot assisted living facility would generate many of these sirens, but a 100-foot building would generate twice as much. In addition, a building of this height would represent a real danger to the homes adjacent to this property in the form of construction accidents. For example, our neighbors Craig and Brandy Lottley have shared with us that the builders of Somerset Riverfront condominiums, two 100-story buildings which were built adjacent to their house... Oh, can I have one more minute? I'm almost done.
One minute. Do I have a motion?
Sorry.
Motion, I have a second. A motion, a second. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
You have a minute.
All right, I'm nervous. Anyway, they shared with us that the builders of the Riverfront condominiums, which are the same height, dropped a 2x4 through their roof and poured concrete on top of their car, among other things. And I watched that meeting, as I said, on video, and one of the board members was commenting that the owner who's asking for this extension was a first-time developer, and she might not have bought the property if she'd known how old the CUP was. You know, we're not developers, just homeowners in Titusville, but we bought our property thinking we knew what the zoning rules were for our area as well. And when we... area as well. And when we wanted to replace a five-foot fence on our property, we were told that the current rule is allowed for four feet, so that people could see the river better, and we complied with that. So, we'd just like to see the zoning rules applied to everyone. And we'd like you to consider the negative impact on the homeowners and the church near this proposed 100-foot building.
Thank you, ma'am. Wait one second. Member Jordan?
Should I?
Thank you. Don't be nervous.
I don't know what I'm supposed to do.
I got a little confused. I'm assuming you're in the blue house. You're in the blue house, right?
Yes, sir.
Right next to it.
Yes, sir.
You've done a great job with enhancing that building. Looks really nice, for sure. But I was a little confused. You were talking about the Catholic Church, and that's really across the street from you.
Oh, yeah. I was just talking about the noise. But that's correct. It's across, it's directly across the street.
Okay. So, am I to assume that you're against this development next to your house? Is that what you're saying?
What I'm against is I don't understand why a 14-year-old CUP issued to a completely different person for a different project is now, this owner's asking you to extend it one more time, 14 years later, for a different project. Nothing's ever been done on that lot all these years. And I hear people talking about, you know, work continuing. And of course, we did hear them say in this meeting, well, at one point, there was a dumpster on the property, and at another point, there was a planter placed there, and these were indications that work was ongoing. But that's not, well, it's not for me to say. But I'm, I do think that things have changed as far as that the rule against the, or in favor, I should say, of the maximum of 50 feet is from 2005. Right? This permit would allow this person to get around that and build twice the height.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thanks.
At this point, would either the city attorney or Ms. Pusaka give, like to at least tell the history of the, the project as to why it was extended, and some of it was done by the state, and so forth? Either one of you?
I don't know enough of the accurate history. I can tell you, a lot of it had to do with code changes, potentially some states of emergency, and through the statutory process of the, the state granting extensions upon request. Peggy may know more of that history. I just know that there's, this has been extended through code provisions, statutory provisions, and others. But I do not know the specifics.
I don't have the specifics in front of me, but I can tell you that I got here in 2012. And prior to 2012, the CUP had been expired, had been extended through state statute, which said that during the economic downturn, that they were, permits were automatically extended. I think if you see, the ordinance includes that, that's, was called the continuation of the 2009 real estate market conditions. In addition to that, there was also extensions for emergencies. The state says that during emergencies, such as hurricanes and that kind of thing, that a permit can get extended six months. I believe this application would, included that. There was, the ordinance has been amended several times to allow further extensions of this conditional use permit. And so, it has been, I believe I've written four ordinances that allows this conditional use permit to be extended.
That may sound somewhat confusing, and I went through it. It is confusing. But there were several times, and the largest ones were on the state level, and they were for the whole state, not just that property, because there was a major recession going on, and a lot of builders wouldn't, not able to, if they put the money into it at that point, it had sat, it sat there, and they lost a fortune. So, they petitioned the state government, and the state government gave them a, an extension if they wanted it. So, that's one of your questions. There's probably more. But I have a question of my own. Mr. Rice, do you represent the app? Mr. Rice? Woody? Hey. Do you represent the owner of the property? Well, we should have asked you to come up first.
This, this is not a quasi-judicial. There is no applicant. This is a legislative matter.
Oh, so you don't, there is no applicant? No, you, you don't represent the applicant, then?
Yes, I do.
Well, it's...
For, for the CUP that she was talking about, is that what you're talking about?
Well, I'm going to make a, a call here. Since you were involved, as you worked on staff at that time, you probably have more history with that property, able to explain it. If there's something you would like to add to that, why don't you do it now while we're talking about this particular thing?
Yeah, I can go through a lot of information on, on the project. Very familiar with it. I was actually involved with it before I came to work for the city. I was involved with it, obviously, with permanent through the city, and then the current owner of the property hired me to represent her.
Let me just ask one. Does it cause any problem for me to allow him to come up at this point?
I assume he has a card.
I do.
Which will be called. If, if you prefer to take the card now, you certainly do that. But again, he is not an applicant. This is, this applies to all property, all CUPs in the city.
I just wanted to see if we couldn't answer some of our questions. But let's go by the, the way the cards are. Go ahead and call the next card.
Thank you. For legislative, we will take them in the order received. And the next is traditionally, Thomas Perez.
Too long. My name is Thomas Perez. I live at 3025 South Washington Avenue, the same blue house that we were speaking about. And yes, we are aware of many of these extensions were not in the control of the contractor, not all. I viewed the PNC meeting video of Tuesday, November 20th, and I was moved by how long and hard the PNC worked on this issue of a continuous use permit extension. And at the end, it did not appear that there was any sense of satisfaction for the outcome. From the proceeding, I ascertained that this municipality has the longest and oldest permit life of any municipality, at the extreme, four years. Other municipalities can get the job done within the permit time, ranging from three years to six months. It appears that the bottom line is that a project needs to be actually continuously developed once approved. Continuously is not an arbitrary term for a developer to use to sidestep requirements. Also, I'm confused about why the city conducts hearings and workshops to describe and educate on what it means to have responsible development of our community. I've attended a few of these. If we ignore the recommendations, such as for CUP height change, such as for area of US-1 study, encouraging development on the west side of US-1, such as not placing ALFs in coastal high-hazard areas, such as having waterfront areas open to all. Development must not be slowed down, is the comment I recently heard at a council meeting. Development is not good or bad, okay? But how it is done will make it potentially good for some and bad for others, or good for the community, or not good for the community at large. Such a statement, development must be, what must not be slowed down, being made by a developer, I can understand. But coming from a council member speaks volumes to me. The history of Titusville and much of Florida is clear. There has been much development for the benefit of mostly developers in this community. People and commissions and councils have a sacred responsibility to the welfare of their communities and the environment we coexist with, to represent, respect, and protect the whole community. We know better, but we do not do better. We have rules, and there may be an extraordinary reason for an occasional exception. But exceptions do not make rule, as in the placement of a planter or idol.
Do you need additional time, sir?
I need 30 seconds.
How about a minute?
Sure.
Can I have a motion? I have a motion and a second. Any, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Go ahead, sir.
A developer's interest is to develop property in an expedient manner and move on to the next opportunity. It is, it is the responsibility of the council to ensure that that development occurs that is within the established parameters and intent of the city's laws for the community they serve. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Clerk, call the next card, please.
Woody Rice.
Woody Rice, 505 Indian River Avenue. And first, let me apologize, Ms. Miller could not be here tonight, because she had travel plans already for Thanksgiving, and, but she, sorry to miss the meeting. The CUP for this project doesn't expire till April 12, 2020. And the reason why we're here tonight is because she's a first-time developer. Financing will not go through, investments won't, unless she can say, you know, prove that come April 12, 2020, in your, in the middle of construction, that the city won't come out and say, your CUP is no longer good. Now, I doubt the city would ever do that, because it's an equitable estoppel case, okay, from, from that point of standpoint. But financial institutions, investors don't really care about that. They don't want to get in that position. They want to know that when they loan the money, or they invest in the project, that it will be completed. That's what's holding this up. We're ready to move forward on everything. I'm at 95% site plan. Building plans are currently being finished up, and are supposed to be done by the mid-December, okay? So, we can make our supplemental and get this done. Yes, has the city been very gracious in the past with extending this for the previous owner of the property? Absolutely. There's no doubt. I counted up, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven times that the state passed different House bills that allowed the CUP to be extended, legally extended. Every time that it's been extended, it's been legally extended. It still has not passed due. We have till April 12. So, it, it's really about financing. It, it's about stopping construction in the middle of a project. Time is money. Mr. Jordan, the contractors, you know, they're not going to sit back and, and wait for something, for an inspection every six months. They're going to get the job done, because if they're not in and out, they're not making money if they're sitting on a project. So, that's real. The Florida Building Code is written that way, because there are things like homeowners that build their own homes. And when you're a homeowner building your own home, sometimes it doesn't quite go quite as fast as you thought it would. Okay? And I'm just, that's a voice of experience, because I built my own home. I built every piece of it myself. And yes, did I come in and get an inspection every six months? Yes, I did. But I was doing the electrical by myself. I was doing the plumbing by myself. So, so I'm glad the code allowed me to do that, so I could build my own home. But, you know, a GC couldn't make money building a home the way I built the home. Okay? Most contractors would not make, would not make any money. So, you know, all we're asking is to, to allow a first-time developer that does have an investment, they're ready to close on the deal pending...
Do you need more time, sir?
Yeah, come, give me 30 seconds.
Go for a minute. So... I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
You got a minute.
First-time developer, ready to move forward. She has investors, ready to close this month. But it hinges on these type of things to, to take place to finish that deal, and can move forward. Just keep in mind, this CUP hasn't been extended. You all have been very gracious, and so has the, well, the state has done things for economic development. And, and we're just asking that we've done everything legal. We just need this one thing. Recommendation, based on what you said, I would make sure that the language said that the building permit had to be associated with the CUP. So, you couldn't just get, come in here and say, hey, I got a CUP, it's getting expired, I want to pull a dumpster permit. It has to be related to the CUP. Like, in this case, it's a vacant piece of property. You need to pull your building permit, you know, and all those things will be in there of the inspections. You can't come in and get a different one and to extend your CUP. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Nelson?
Can I be a play devil's advocate, whether it was either you or Peggy? So, the CUP has been in existence for four years. And we're saying that, I'm assuming there was a building permit, right? Maybe, maybe not?
I, I, keep going, maybe I'll catch up.
Okay. But it's had there for almost four years, three years, three and a half years. And my curiosity is, at some point, do we say, your CUP is done? You can't come in and get a building permit at the end of the, that time limit? You can't come in at three and a half years and say, I want a building permit?
Then the way to do that is to limit, then move the four years to a different timeframe.
I like back to two.
Because, well, it takes time to build, especially a large project. I think Mr. Rice could tell you how long it may take to go through the water management district process. I would not be surprised if it took a year sometimes to get a permit. A DOT permit can take a lot of time.
Okay.
So, I, the, at once upon a time, it was a year. To me, that made no sense. You, you couldn't get all those permits for large projects in a year. So, then it moved to this four years. And if you're not comfortable with that, I'm going to ask the attorney if he feels like it's been advertised in such a way that you could modify that four years. If you look at the information that we put together on page 197 and 198, we did our best to tell you the outstanding CUPs and what their issue is. If you look at number three, 2016, that proposed hotel, I've been told, the gentleman who was going to develop that has moved out of state, and I don't expect that to move forward. The indoor shooting range, I have been told, is they've changed their mind. The convenience store, the site plan has been approved, and we're talking to them. But they are having issues with DOT, that's in the Wedge property, and there's a lot going on there. On the childcare facility, there has been a site plan approved, but to my knowledge, the building permit's not been issued. The mini warehouse is currently under construction there on Garden Street. The off-site parking is going through site plan review, and a permit will be required to pave the parking, as well as putting in lighting. And then the last one is the Elks Lodge, which is only interior renovations.
Okay.
So, that kind of shows you that since about 2017, the projects that are moving forward, with the exception of this project, they have been around about two years.
So, is there any penalty for somebody getting a CUP and not acting on it?
Only that it will expire.
At the end of four years.
Yes, ma'am.
Ma'am, some, some CUPs don't have construction associated with them as well.
Right, right.
So, to clarify, Mr. Larisse, of course, made an excellent point, as he always does, that sometimes there is no requirement, and so the CUP just begins and continues as long as that, that project is continuing.
So, is there a way to put in there that the CUP expires after two years? So, cut it in half, and if it's one that requires building?
Again, I would ask the attorney to let, I've looked at this very briefly while everyone was talking.
Yeah.
Because you have, I do think that there is at least, my suggestion would be, if you plan to do that, that we table this, because I think that the people with the convenience store that were approved on February 27, 2018, should be aware that, that time limit would be changed. That may impact them.
Yeah.
There is a childcare facility on September 28, 2018, that they would still have nine months or so. And then the rest of these have been approved in this year. So, but I, I would think that that would be something that we should notify them of if indeed we're going to modify this, because it could impact that. And they're, the, I'm sure that Mr. Broom has comments about what that might mean.
I'm sure. Thank you, thank you. Sorry.
Thank you, thank you, sorry I led up here. I would like to see us table it and make those modifications that is two years, not four. And secondly, that you get a, a building permit along with your CUP if that's what's needed. And that if you are, that you have to be actively doing construction, working on the project, maybe by referencing the other code.
Again, Mr. Broom will have to confirm that he feels that this has been advertised in such a way that that would allow that.
Yes, Mr. Broom.
Mr. Broom?
Couple of comments. It seems like we're going back in time. Mr. Rice probably remembers back with CUPs, it used to be if you're going to build, there was a two-year number, if I recall, that if it's construction, you had to have permits in two years. And then that caused problems. So then we just got rid of all the hoops if you're constructing and it just went to four years. So this would kind of be going back to the way it kind of used to be before they realized there was issues and then went to the four years. Because what they said was, well, two years for construction, we have to get our permits, we have to go through the agencies. And two years really wasn't working, but at that point, I believe they said, well, four years should be give, give you enough time to get your permits from the other agencies, get your plans together, get your financing. So they thought four years. And I believe in addition to four years now, you plus you get one-year extension through the administrator. So I think you get five, potentially. And so if, if you want to go back to the two years, it is kind of going back to the way things used to be done. But I have to admit that, and, and that's fine if council wants to, to do some things. If you're going to make those changes to that degree, we'd have to go back, in my opinion, back to the other boards because that's not something they were looking at for recommendations. But you still have the issue, right?
Correct.
If, at towards the end of the two years, they pull their permits and they begin building, what do you do?
Right.
They're in the middle of building. And the issue that they're trying to address now is that issue that, once you begin construction, as written, your CUP expires if you don't have your certificate of occupancy within four years. So there, it's, it's, the, the goal was to allow the construction to be completed if you began building within the four years.
And my thought is that if you're going to get a CUP, then you need to be actively engaged in pursuing that. You can't sit, sit there idle for two years and then start working.
One question.
Or four years and start working.
One question I, I might have of staff.
Okay.
What's required to get the building permit? I mean, because some of the discussion seems to be at the last second, we're going to come in and get a building permit. So to get that first building permit, what kind of work or would have to be required to even achieve that building permit at that point? So we understand.
Well, I'm just going to look at an example of a couple of different issues on page 198. And these are all orange.
Okay.
On the mini warehouse, number two, 2019, they required a, a site plan, a demolition permit, and a building permit. So those were three separate processes. Some of them, we will accept a building review after the first site plan review.
Okay.
So you can do those semi-concurrently, but you have to go through the first site plan review. So that's, it, it is not unusual for a site plan to take, what, six months, you think, Woody? I'm sorry. Yeah, because you can help me if you don't mind. What, what do you think's an average time to get a site plan approved?
On a simple site plan, six months would be accurate. On something more involved, it might take nine months to get through the city. But, and here's the reason why. Let's take another project I did. I had permit through DOT, had permit through City of Titusville, had permit through St. John's River Water Management. I had historic issues and so we had to do historical expiration to make sure that, none of that. So I, I literally, the Army Corps of Engineers, I literally had to permit through five different agencies. A building permit permits through one agency and it's a local jurisdiction, okay? So when you get site plan, it, it takes such a long time. The other project I'm working on, it's very dear to my heart right now, is Sandpoint.
Yeah.
Come January, it'd be a year that I've been working on this project because of the requirements of everything that we're trying to accomplish there and all the different permits I have to, I have to get from the different agencies. It's just not about Titusville when it comes to pulling permit.
And
Although we're talking about the Titusville permit for the CUP extension.
Well, and I'm sitting there thinking, I understand that and obviously if you have a lot of permits and you're working on that, then you're actually working on something. But for somebody to not do anything and then come in last minute and say, well, you know, hey, here I am, that, that doesn't work for me.
And I don't disagree with, with, with that.
I'm not sure how to say that.
Okay. Where I, where I struggle is that my client's on this property for about a year and a half.
Yeah.
You know, and, and we've redesigned it, okay? And actually, one of the CUP extensions required us to redesign it because the rules changed. We had to go from 25-foot setback from the river to a 50-foot setback from the river. That pushed everything. It changed parking, stormwater, changed everything. So that's, you know, one, one of the progressions that has happened also. She's owned it for a year and a half, so she really, I mean, yes, on paper, it looks horrible that this CUP has been extended.
Yes.
Okay? But my client's only owned it for a year and a half to two years and we've, we're, she's spent her life savings trying to do this project and realized that she can't get a financing now because of this issue. And we're just trying to get it going and moving forward. And that's why I recommend it, to her, that the proper way to do this was to tie it to the construction permit because it shows progress. Don't come in here and ask council to extend the CUP itself without showing some signs of progress. Therefore, I thought the, the building permit I did was the best avenue which to show that progress, that the project is finally pulling a permit, has it in their hand, starting construction. Instead, just come in here and say, oh, we need another two-year extension for the CUP. Can we change the ordinance again?
Yeah, I don't want to do that, okay.
Before I let anybody else, and everybody else has spoken, so I'm going to just jump on here. I'm, I'm a little ill at ease because what you're asking for is fine, to solve a problem for the future. But we're dealing with something that has progressed in good faith.
Right.
And we can't make rules to stop them when they've gone to this point and just arbitrarily. That would be retroactive.
Oh, no. And I understand that. And, and for the Perez's, you know, unfortunately, we're at the point we're at. But for the future, I want to make sure that we're not back in this point.
I understand, but that should be a different conversation than, than this evening's conversation we're talking about. They, they're not happy with what's going on.
Correct.
They have permits. That's the discussion. What improvements we're going to make should be subsequent to, to this and we can put it on.
Well, that, that was my thought and that's, that's really why I brought it up.
No, I'm not saying you're, what you're, what you're saying is aren't good ideas. I'm just saying they shouldn't be applied in this case because it's already permitted and so forth.
Right. But if Mr. Rice has ideas on how to make it better, I, I do want to, wanted to sort of pick his brain and say.
Okay. I just don't want anybody to have the impression that you're solving their problem because they'll go home and say, well, we got it taken care of now.
Right.
And then they'll come back and say, what happened?
Right.
If I could, I also have another suggestion. If you look at the bottom of page 193 in paragraph A2, the city council has the right to adopt a specific expiration date as the part of every conditional use permit.
Oh, that's right.
So regardless of whether, if you, if, if you want to go forward tonight and get the inconsistency between the building permit being under chapter six, being able to move forward, and not being able to move forward and continue the CUP under this chapter, which I believe is the right thing to do. Because what we've got, if you came to me on, if Mr. Rice came to me on April the 29th, he has a building permit that he has issued, he's moving forward, he's making good progress. And, and he said to me, does my CUP expire? If I read chapter 3477, the answer is yes. If I read chapter six, the answer is no. That's what we're trying to do tonight.
Right.
Is be consistent. However, regardless of whether the ordinance gets adopted in any different way tonight, you have the right in every CUP to limit this to less than four years or to make it greater than four years with the site speci, with the specific expiration date. So if you want to resolve this issue tonight, you could. You could direct us to do something else, re-advertise, go back to the other boards. And should a conditional use permit come to you between now and then, you always have that opportunity to adopt a specific expiration date.
That's probably a good idea.
It, it can be a good idea. But you're not suggesting that we cut it off short so they can't continue the project?
No, sir. As I said, right now, in my opinion, the code, we have two different standards in the code and I would believe that the right thing to do is to follow the Florida Building Code. But if someone asks me, and Mr. Rice asked me this before his, the current owner purchased this property, what was I going to do in that event? And I said, the code is internally inconsistent. And that means
Say that again, please.
The code is internally inconsistent. Chapter six says they may proceed forward once they have a building permit and they're moving forward in a timely manner. Chapter 34 does not. Did I, did I miss something, Mr. Broom?
No, I agree. The, the issue you have is we have termination dates of CUPs. But still, you have the issue of prior to the expiration, if they have the building permit and they're moving forward. Can you imagine saying you need to stop work, your CUP has expired and you cannot finish the building and we have maybe half a building constructed? That, that's the, now, and then you do have your equitable estoppel, invested rights and those kind of things. But I think that was the issue she's talking about is then, then the legal question, right? Well, this section says the CUP has expired, you can't let them finish. But they have a building permit issued. So I think that was really the crux of what staff is trying to resolve. Ms. Bisacca is right, you know, depending on the project under the code, you, when you consider a CUP, you can put expiration dates on CUPs. Depending on the project, I've never seen that happen. You know, what criteria you would apply, but you certainly could look at a typical project and, and apply a date. But then the same issue, right? If they have a building permit before that expiration date you've applied, they, should they be able to continue to finish the building?
Member Jordan.
I almost can't forget what I was going to say, it's been so long. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I think we're kind of missing the point of what we're trying to do here. Even though, due respect to Mr. Rice, this has nothing to do with Mr., Mr. Rice's, it's the extension of the CUP once you have a permit. If I've got a permit, I'm telling you, or any developer have a permit, they want to finish. And as Mr. Rice said, even though it's not about Mr. Rice, we just want to finish this thing so we can get our money and not lose money. So for us to start talking about, well, they got four years to, to do this, sometimes it takes a long time to get all the paperwork in order, in order for us to go forward. But once I've got a permit, I'm going to do everything I possibly can to get this building done. Back to Mrs. Rice, Mr. Rice's representation of the, the property there, there was an extenuating circumstances. They ended up selling the, the property, a new person came in, they bought the property assuming that the CUP was still there and they want to build something within the CPU guidelines. The question for us, and, and I was reading how this even came about, and it turns out on October 8th, we approved the availability to amend the code to allow conditional use permits to remain active as long as the associated building permit is active. And since the building permit is still active, they need to continue. You cannot stop a developer once he started just because the CPU has, you know, that, that just doesn't make any sense to me. And a person could lose a whole lot of money. You got a permit. The city gave you permission to do what you asked for under the CPU guidelines and they should be able to finish. So the bottom line to me is what the planning zoning came up with, we had already said, let's just reference the code 66 point, whatever it was, and everybody should be fine. I think we're muddying the water when we start talking about, oh, four years for you to do something. Well, sometimes it's, it takes that. I can tell you the case right now, my school, it took us a couple of years to get the permits that we needed. We were fighting with Broad County code planning and zoning. We had to get our, our transportation study done. They told us all the stuff that we had to do is to bring the cars off of the main highway and put them on our property and all this stuff. And it took time for everybody to come together and say, yes, this is acceptable, we're going to give you your, your site permit and your building permit. And that costs money. So I would suggest that we go along with exactly what the P and Z said with the modification of adding the Florida Code 66 or whatever it is and go on with it. If we want to look at four years, which I don't think you want to do because I, I heard someone say, I think it was, the attorney said that we had already gone down that path before, it was two years, we got to four years and there was reason to do that. You just can't stop a developer and say, well, you should take only two years to get something done. A lot of this stuff is out of their control, but they are very focused on getting this thing done. And sometimes it does take four years. And as the attorney says, they even have another year extension and sometimes they need that to get it done, but they want to get it done as quickly as possible. So my suggestion is that we approve this as is with the modification. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, and I think it was said by the city attorney, in, in maybe a different context, but we're kind of going back in time. I, I tend to agree with, uh, Member Jordan that, that what we're dealing with right here is the change of, as a P and Z decided and didn't side with, advised, and we're moving forward in that direction. You have a, a CUP that's good until April, I guess?
April.
Um, April? And, and that seems to be one thing. And, and I don't know that I want to go back and get all into this, but it, it hit me kind of strongly that this is the same CUP from 14 years ago?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we are back in time, okay? And we've gone through, and, and it can be the, a change of project on the same CUP? And it can
The conditional use permit dealt with height and density. It did not deal with use.
Okay. So we can change the project and we can change the developer and we can change all kinds of things, but it's the same CUP?
Yes, because
Okay.
the height and the density have not changed.
Okay. I, I, I think I get that, but not to muddy the waters. I, I'm just saying, and, and kind of back in time because an awful lot of this, let's face it, took place a decade before we even got here, at least me. You know, so this whole CUP is a decade old before I even walked in here. So there's a lot of water under the bridge, it, it is what it is. But for this moment, I don't want to see buildings halfway started and then come into a stop because the CUP runs out. And that's where I think that we need to move forward on this ordinance. I have concerns about the other parts and I'd like to clear that up. I'm not real, I, I'm not the expert, I get that. I'm not a developer, I, I'm not an engineer, I'm none of those things. But I am a guy that's a little surprised to hear that this is the same CUP from 14 years ago with a different project and different developer and there's probably been several developers in between.
Okay.
I'm good.
I just want to make one comment that it was 14 years, but a large portion of that was due to the state's mandates on it. So it didn't happen from the city at all. We, that wasn't us. We do have another card.
I can hold for the last card.
Miss Focu, that's all right? All right, we'll keep you up there, though. Please call a card.
Michael Majak.
Still Michael Majak, still Alpang Lane, still watching CUPs being traded in Titusville for money.
Excuse me, sir?
I've, I'm, we're still seeing CUPs traded for money. And by that, I'll be specific, when somebody goes to the city to get a CUP, it's granted to the property, not to the owner, which increases the value of the property. So then they sell it to the next guy for twice the price. He then comes to the city council, says, hey, I don't want R1B, I want R1C. And you guys say, okay. And he says, good, I've got multifamily. And then I sell it to Woody. And Woody builds a multifamily story. This kind of horse trading has taken place in this city for the 30 years that I've been here. And this CUP is one of them. been here, and this CUP is one of them.
And I've been here on this council for fourteen years.
Yes.
And anything we have done is because we followed the codes and the ordinances--
Of course.
--and the movements of the state. We did not do anything for money.
I didn't say you did.
Well, you could have been misunderstood by what you said.
Let's, let's be clear. I'm not saying anything was improper at the council.
Please continue.
What I'm saying is that there's something improper in the process of what you guys are doing. First of all, when I look at all the other cities and the county, and Orlando and Port Orange, we're the most lenient. We're the only one that allows four years on a CUP. The second most lenient is Brevard County, and they're three years, and that's if approval, it's approved, but if construction stops or there is not substantial or continuous approval for their CUP. So they haven't come back all the time. I like Port Orange the best. The CUP stays with the property owner. If I decide to sell the property, then whatever agreement I made with the city, that's out the window, because the next guy can do whatever he wants to his property. That's, that's the way it works. But in Port Orange, that CUP doesn't become money, doesn't become valuable in a trading commodity kind of way. And that's the point that I think we need to fix here. I don't have a problem with doing a six-month or two-year for a CUP. I think that the building permit and the actions done by that building permit allow the builder to do what he's supposed to. It satisfies the idea of what the CUP is all about. In this particular case, it's about doubling the density and doubling the height of a building in perhaps one of the most sensitive areas in our city, right on the Indian River Lagoon. And you can't tell me that a ten-story building doesn't create more problems than a single-family residence in this location. It's also out of character. It's out of place for the Perez's home, for example. You know, you've got a single-family residence, they're going to be looking up at ten stories right next door. Nobody wants to have that kind of... They can build five stories. They can build with the density that they've already been granted without this CUP. This is about money.
Do you need additional time, sir?
No, sir, I don't.
All right, thank you. I, I will say, I think some of your ideas are, are good. My problem is, we, that's something we need to do to correct the future, not to go back and say, "This person's going to get out of, lose, lose everything probably they have" because we're changing out from under them. It's not a discussion, sir, it was a comment. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, Member Stokoe.
Ms. Busaka, this ordinance as written, I think you stated, will be now in line with the Florida Building Code, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. I mean, the change, I want to be clear.
Okay.
Basically, the change that would allow someone with a building permit to continue to build as long as they're proceeding, that would be consistent with Florida Building Code?
If we were to change four years to three years, would it still be consistent?
With the Florida Building Code?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. The Florida Building Code doesn't talk about conditional use permits or the length of time.
Okay.
That it's not, they talk about building permits.
Okay. And that's kind of where I'm going, I think, with, remember Nelson brought up, is I, the way that this reads, I'm concerned that something could sit there for up to four years, and then somebody files that building permit, and then we can start seeing the progress, and then they'd be okay. I'd, I'd like to shorten that if possible. I'm definitely for what Member Jordan and Vice Mayor said. If they're making progress, I definitely don't want to stop that. But I feel like if we at least put this at three years, we can ensure, hey, get started on the project, and if you're starting, we can continue and allow them. And then I do, as Ms. Busaka pointed out, it looks like council in here, we have the authority to set a specific expiration date. If we want an extension, it can be granted by the city council. I just, like Mr. Mijak even mentioned, like, looking at the other places, I don't, I don't know. I think four years is a bit excessive.
Thank you, sir. I was trying to understand, you know, and I listened to Mr., where'd it go? Mr. Mijak, and talking about the two years, three years, or four years, and I'm trying to understand sincerely, what difference does it make? The applicant comes in and say, "We've got a conditional use for this property, and this is what I want to use it for," right? So now they have the time to, to do it, and they've got to go through their process, site, and all this good stuff. What I hear you say is, "Well, I don't want it to sit there for four years underneath that." If he did, he or she did not get a CUP, and nothing is happening to the property, it's still sitting there. The only difference is, he's got a piece of, he or she has a, a piece of paper that says, "You can use this property for a certain use." So I, I'm really don't, I don't see the difference at all. The CUP just says, "This is a special thing that you can do with this property." If I don't get that, I still bought this property, let's assume I bought a piece of property, and I thought this is what I wanted to do with it. I'm still thinking that. But maybe I haven't even gone to the city and asked for the CUP. I don't see the difference, and that's what I'm trying to understand. No CUP, that property is still blank. With a CUP, that property is still blank, except for the fact I do have an ace in the hole, and I can do something with that property under the CUP that I've, I've been granted in the fourth year. I just don't see what the difference is. Blank property is blank property. It just happened to have a CUP, is what I'm saying.
I was wondering.
No, Member Nelson is next, unless she wants to give up her.
I, I would give it up, because I was getting worried you respond, but go ahead.
I, I just think in this instance, that that's the whole point. The conditional use permit is, it's something unusual, and we're granting something such as a additional height restriction, and this might not be the vision of the city at that time. And if we're granting that conditional use permit, it's to get you going. We granted this for a specific reason. Let's keep going, not sit there an additional four years, because, like, we had the instance with the height restriction, and said, "Okay, we'll grant you and we'll allow you to do it, but if not, you know, we really don't want the height on the river. Get going." That, that's kind of, that's the whole point of the conditional use permit, is my view on it. And then, I don't know, if, if, or Nelson?
Member Nelson?
And I'm just going to add, that I think the idea behind the conditional use permit is that it may be okay in this particular time period, but ten years, ten years down the road, that may be inappropriate. So if you're going to do it, go ahead and do it, because ten years down the road, this may not be something we want there. This is my thought.
Member Jordan?
I, I was just trying to understand the logic, because we can, after we've got the CPU, after we have that special thing there, yeah, you can come along and say, "Boy, I really don't want this thing here," but it's there already. So even though you've changed your mind about it, correct, it's there. So what you're saying is, if we're four or five years hence, and that property still hasn't been used, you're saying, "Okay, we can change our mind and say, no, you can't do that anymore because it's run out." So if that person came back and said, "Okay, now I definitely want to do this after the fifth year," you would tell them, "No, we don't want you to do that now." But if he had done it three years before and he's done it, rather than, "I'll just use ISO, that ISO is there forever," correct? Doesn't that make sense? So I, I don't see that, I don't see a difference, to be honest with you. Okay. Thank you. So are we going to approve this ordinance?
Right now, that depends on you.
Can I make the motion, sir?
You do have the floor, sir.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Oh, let me see where it is. Which one is it?
Nine B.
Here we go. I move to approve the ordinance number thirty-nine dash twenty-nineteen relating to expiration of conditional use permits after issuance of a building permit with the modification of the addition of the Code sixty-six, whatever it was.
So if I understand what you said, you would like it to say, "In the event the applicant obtains a building permit," now, there had been some question about whether it should say, "Associated with the conditional use permit," that was Mr. Rice's suggestion, "within the time period set forth within, the conditional use permit shall not expire so long as," and then the planning and zoning said, "The applicant is continuously working toward completion, consistent with Florida Building Code and Section six sixty-four of this code."
I can live with that.
Is that what you're intending?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Before I ask for a second, I'm going to close the public hearing, because I should have done it before. No, that's my fault. So now, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please, Kirk.
Kind of discussion with that, real quick, just to add to the sec, second with discussion. I, I'm seconding that motion based on what I said previously about trying to be more consistent, about not having somebody have to stop at eighteen months. And it's got to be clear, and I know it's been said several times, we're not talking about one project here, we're talking about an ordinance. I will say again, I have concerns, and maybe we can talk down the road, about fourteen years of the same CUP and different, you know, different projects. I know it's still, you know, the, the CUP is X number of floors, so that's the CUP. But it's a lot different if the project changes. I, I like what Member Nelson said, that what's good now might not be good fourteen years from now. So I have a problem with that. That being said, I think this ordinance is, is a clarification and, and some consistency that we don't have now that I want to see us have, so the second stands.
Just a comment, if I may. Just, at any point, we can come back and redo with some of the suggestions that I've heard that are, are good, but this moves this out of the picture at this point. Okay. Uh, Member Stokoe?
I was just going to clarify, I'm going to be voting no, and my main reason is, I would just like to see the four years changed to three, but that's why you're going to know that I'm voting no.
Member Nelson?
And I'm going to agree with you.
And discussion, I, I'm voting yes based on that. I agree with Member Jordan. I don't see any difference when we're talking about a CUP between a three-year and a four-year. It's still going to be an empty area if they don't get started. I want them to get started. We talked, that's the first thing we talked about. I don't want them sitting there. And quite honestly, normally, when people get something, this is odd, because it's bounced around so much, but normally, when somebody gets going and has a, a CUP, let's go. I mean, they're losing money. So normally, money's the motivator, as we've heard in, in another context. They want to get going. So I, I'm simply saying that my yes vote is, is, is got a lot to do with consistency and, and, you know, consistency in the, in the four-year versus three-year. I don't know that that's, that's a big difference maker.
And I think I've made my position clear, but roll call vote, please.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Member Stokoe?
No.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
No.
Passes with three, four, two against. Thank you. Next item?
Next item is nine C, ordinance number forty-two thousand nineteen relating to pervious pavement. An ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances by amending Chapter thirty, Development Options, Section thirty-two seventy-six, General Design Requirements to Permit the Use of Pervious Pavement Standards and Credits City-Wide, Providing for Separability, Repeal of Conflicting Ordinances, and Effective Date and Incorporation into the Code.
On November twentieth, two thousand nineteen, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval as it applies to all areas outside the ACC, with the condition that the Technical Manual Reference seven point six point two point one shall be reduced from seventy-five percent to fifty percent. The vote was four one. On October eighth, two thousand nineteen, city council directed staff to prepare an ordinance to address several issues related to tree protection, including allowing incentives for pervious pavement concrete to be utilized throughout the city. Although this issue is related to tree protection, it is not part of the Tree Protection Code and therefore is a separate ordinance. Pervious pavement, pavement, concrete is low-impact development technique, which has been identified as an infiltration best management practice by the U.S. Green Building Council and the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency. Because pervious pavement concrete is given a seventy-five percent credit towards the size of the required onsite retention ponds, a, a larger percent of the site should be available to increase areas for tree preservation and protection. Standards for use of pervious pavement standards are contained in Section seven point six point two of the Stormwater Technical Manual, which is part of your packet. Also attached is a copy of the technical specifications for pervious pavement concrete used by the city and additional information on pervious pavement. This is your public hearing on ordinance forty dash two thousand nineteen. Ms. Busaka is available to answer questions that you may have on this ordinance.
Ms. Busaka, any comments?
I just wanted to comment that the development engineer, the city's development engineer, has explained that every pervious pavement that goes in is based upon the site-specific soils and the conditions. So the fact that it said that they can get seventy-five percent is the maximum amount, and if the soils do not support that, then the, by good, using good engineering standards, you would actually get a lower percentage of credit. And that would just depend on how that was going to function based on the soils in the site.
Counsel, anyone have questions, sir? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I got a little confused, because I'm assuming that if I've got pervious hardscape, if you will, you're going to have water that is basically percolating down back into the aquifer. When you have a pond, then you're really concentrating that water in one location. So in my mind, the pervious hardscape, for lack of a better word, is, is better for you. So with the fifty, reducing it to fifty percent says that you have to have your pond at a certain size, a larger size than if it was seventy-five percent. If, if the soil is acceptable, then you can do this. So to me, you know, six in one hand, half a dozen in the other, you're asking me to dig a hole versus, I don't want to dig a hole, and if I can get pervious surface here, then I can have the soil percolate the, the water, and it should be better for all concerned. It'd be better for the citizens, it'd be better for the developer and everything. So I'm not sure what the good rationale is to reduce it from seventy-five percent credit to fifty percent credit, because we're basically just trying to make sure that the water's percolating back into the soil and making sure we have clean water. Am I missing something, Eric?
I don't believe you are, based on my conversations with our engineer, but there, Mr. Rice is here, he is an engineer, he's familiar with this, so he may have a more technical response, but my non-engineering response is, I think you have it, as I understand it.
Well, I'm an engineer too, a civil engineer, believe it or not, so.
Not quite the same, Robert. I'm not sure what the protocol is, because this has never happened before. Sorry?
I have a card.
You have a card?
I have a card.
Okay. Well, we'll get to that. Does counsel have any other questions of, of staff? Okay, go right ahead.
Peggy. The area of critical concern, is it a seventy-five percent credit?
It's up to a seventy-five percent credit.
Okay.
The, the language, as we discussed, it, it does say seventy-five percent, but the way that the engineer described it is that the soils in the area of critical concern should be such that there is good percolation, and they could get that entire credit. But the credit not only depends on the soils, but also the type of surface that's put down.
Okay.
And so you have to look at the manufacturer's specifications plus the soils, and then best engineering practice would be that, that would be determined on a case-by-case basis. But it can't go above seventy-five percent.
Okay. And my recollection was these pervious pavement-type treatments are probably twice as much as using impervious. I, I'm sorry to remember them.
It is more expensive, definitely, because it takes certification to re, to put it in, it takes a certification for us to inspect it. It's more expensive to, to maintain. It's more expensive to maintain, so it is not something that is done.
Cheaply.
No, ma'am, it is not.
Okay. Thanks.
I have a question, if I can. In discussions with staff, of course, we all go over these with the city manager and city attorney, because we can't, we can't talk about it for sunshine reasons. But at that meeting I had yesterday, we came up with a suggestion of making it up to 75% rather than going down with whatever stipulations you think would be.
I believe that that would be consistent with the way that it's currently being handled, anyway.
Yeah, so that would give an option, but a possibility of the full credit. Okay. I don't see any more. Rice, are there more cards, please? There are more cards, I know that. At least one.
Yes, sir.
Please call the card.
We have blind card, Woody Rice.
Woody Rice, 505 Indian River Avenue. And yes, you're correct, and I'm not really sure. I was at the P&amp;Z meeting, I actually spoke to him for quite a while, and at the end, I don't know where the 50% came from, quite frankly, because it wasn't based on anything technical. Okay, it was just a gut feeling that they thought it was too much. It's the way I took it, okay? I could be wrong. And I did share these numbers with them because it had come up before, the 75%. And I went to satisfy technically, what 75% is that really, is that really a good number from a technical standpoint? And the way that number came about was through working with the Concrete Institute when we were developing our pervious pavement specifications, and that was their recommendation based on their analysis of pervious concrete. So what I decided to do is, I found a paper written exactly about this with parameters that are very close to what we use, and it was done by the Journal of Hydraulic Engineering by ASCE. And so I used their information and I plugged in our values for storm events. So in Titusville, the first storm event is what we call the Bean Annual Storm. It's a storm that may happen 50% of the time in a year. And that storm event is five inches in 24 hours, okay? The next storm event was what we call the 10-year storm, and that's a storm event that might happen 10% chance of happening in one year. And that's 7.5 inches of rainfall. The last one was a 25-year storm that has a 4% chance of happening in one year, and that's 9.5 inches. And those are the three magic rainfall events that we calculate stormwater and sizing of pipes and everything on. So if you have something that's totally paved, an impervious surface, with a five-inch rainfall, 4.76 inches of that run off the pavement. If you, in the 7.5, the 10-year storm, 7.26 out of 7.5 run off the pavement. 25-year storm out of 9.5, 9.26 run off the pavement, okay? When you go to use pervious pavement, what, the whole theory is that it does percolate the water into the ground at that point until it gets saturated. So there's, it is based on soils, it's based on the mix, the construction technique, and the water table, extremely important. If the water table's at the top of the soil, it's not going to work. So our requirement, most time it's two feet, the bottom of your pervious has to be two feet above the seasonal high groundwater table, not the normal ground, but the seasonal high.
Do you need more time, sir?
Can I have three minutes?
How much?
Three minutes.
Thirty minutes?
Two minutes?
Two. Okay.
I'll give him two more minutes, if that's the number.
Two more, two more minutes? I have a motion in a second. Did you really say that?
You get me talking about something.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion from counsel? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
You've got two.
Real quick, jumping to a Class A soil, which is, and having one inch per hour percolation rate in your soils, which is the minimum our standard says you have to have, okay? And that's what this study was predicated on, that with a five-inch rainfall, using pervious pavement, you have .09 inches that run off the pavement.
Wow.
Big improvement. That's a 98.2% improvement.
Yeah.
Not 75%, 98.2. 10-year storm, 7.5 inches of rainfall, .65 inches run off the pavement. The rest percolates right there into the ground. 25-year storm, 9.5 inches rainfall, 1.39 inches run off the pavement. That's Class A soils. When you get to less soils, the worst case I got with one inch was a 72.9%. It wasn't quite 75, it was 72.9, and that was in the 25-year storm event. All the rest of them were above 75%. And I did share that with P&amp;Z. Titusville was one of the leading communities of pervious pavement when it started. Every development that uses pervious pavement has that attached to the site development sheet. It's our specifications and our details of how you do pervious pavement and the requirements and classifications of who can lay it, who inspects it. Our inspectors are certified in pervious pavement, they have ill-filtrometers that they go out and use to make sure that the percolation rate in the soil, that the soils are compacted properly. So it is a science. And 75% isn't a made-up number, it's a real calculated number. If I would, if, you know, if you want to get rid of, change the 75%, change it to just whatever the engineering says, because I'd love to have 98.2%.
Thank you, sir. Member Jordan?
Hey, I've got some questions for you, Mr. Rice. Thank you very much.
I'm sorry.
I have some questions for you.
Okay.
All right. First of all, the, and I asked this question of staff and they didn't have to answer for it, brick pavers, they're not pervious, but they do have cracks between each one. That is a whole lot better than having a concrete driveway, right, that is impervious? Is that correct?
With the pervious or?
Normal brick pavers.
Well, we don't, the city does not give credit for brick pavers.
Really?
Okay. Because you fill it with sand and over time, you drive over top of it and it compresses, okay? To the point where you're really not having any percolation. But they do make what they call an eco-stone paver that allows water to go through the actual paver brick itself, and we do give a credit for that one, okay? So if you can demonstrate your product that you're using works as well as pervious concrete, that's acceptable.
Okay. So basically, brick pavers are not pervious surfaces, so, you know, you.
They're impervious.
Yeah, they're impervious, yes. Thank you, sir. I'll make sure I say that right, because you're not an engineer, but you know a few, right?
I know.
Okay.
Let me just, even gravel, if you were to do just gravel, you think, oh, that, over time, it gets crushed up.
Right.
And gets compressed with vehicle traffic loads, okay?
Okay.
So St. John's, no one gives credit for that. Because, yeah, it perks pretty well when you first put it in, but over time, it gets dense and compressed, and you lose the value.
All right. Isn't there something out there for drives now, or even roads, that have asphalt that allows water to seep through it? Isn't there some product out there for that now?
There is, I'm not real familiar with that product, okay? Because we've just used pervious concrete so much, but I think there is an asphalt now that actually has that capability. I just don't know that much about it.
Commercially, since we have some buildings out there that actually have these pervious surfaces, is that something that we should go to try to push more or less? When we're building, let's say we're building another 7-Eleven or Wawa or something like that, is that something that we should be pushing for as far as having that as a requirement?
What pervious allows to do is it treats the stormwater in place, allows you to reduce some in the runoff, the greenhouse effect, you know, is less.
Right, right.
You know, it's not blacktop, it's white, you know, it's, so, and everything perks there in the ground. The things, you know, there's proper use of pervious concrete, and basically, it's in our specs, if you have a high truckload, okay, then the structural integrity over time can damage the pervious.
Right.
So if you have a high-capacity travel area, you probably want to make that out of asphalt or concrete and put the stuff that's not heavily, it's like, in front of all of our dumpster pads, we require 10 feet of concrete.
Right.
It's because our trucks come in, they pick up, they load, and those wheels are, you know, are right there on, and if you keep doing this on pervious concrete, it starts to ravel. So you want to be careful about things like that.
Okay.
You know, so there's proper engineering use.
So normal households, new homes, you would or would not recommend?
No, it wouldn't bother me. It just, you have to, there's things that you want to do with pervious concrete. It just, it's, it'd be an education process. You don't want your grass clippings going on top of your pervious concrete, okay? Because eventually, that stuff will go in there, and the only, but the recovery's very good on pervious. You know, one of the studies I read was 20, they did sites from six to 20 years and did tests on it, and then did tests, all right, how do we rejuvenate it? How do we get it back to what the design, if, once it gets to the point where it's not perking because it's filled in with sediment? And you pressure wash and vacuum it, and most of the time, they got better results than it was when it was originally new.
Really?
Okay?
Wow.
Or, it was like 95 to 105% of the capacity was back from what the original capacity was.
Last question for you, as far as cracks is concerned, regular concrete after a while it cracks. Is there any characteristics of the pervious that is better, or do they crack just as much as regular concrete?
Well, you design pervious, you can sign for different rules, and it's the depth of the pervious, okay? Structurally, it'd be more structural than the basement, that, a lot of times, you use rock under that, okay?
Okay.
But even then, it just depends, it's like 80,000 pounds or something like that, that you, once you start getting high numbers and high traffic of semis, you just, you wouldn't want to put pervious in that area, in that area, if I answered your question.
Yeah, you did.
Okay.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Member Nelson?
Wait a minute, I think this is for Woody, too. So if we're doing a plan development, would this be something that we could use in a plan development?
I'm sorry, I have an ear infection, I couldn't wear my hearing aids, so I'm having a, I'm struggling.
So staff comes to us with a plan development, and usually, they give us, you know, there's some negotiations there. So is this something that we could negotiate? And I guess it's for either of you.
Let me ask you this, Woody, would you want to put a pervious pavement on a roadway?
I was thinking more like a park, like, you know how they set aside certain areas?
I think you have to look at the traffic counts and what type of vehicles were using it, okay?
Yeah.
And then, and I would want to do a little more study on a road, on what the maintenance costs of those things are, the pay-to-sea.
Yeah.
I really didn't look at from that. Most of the time where you see pervious is parking lots, okay?
Okay.
And then a lot of times, sometimes if it's a heavy-use parking lot, the drive path will be asphalt or concrete, and only the parking spaces are the pervious.
What about like, if we set aside recreation areas, the sidewalks going through that recreation area?
Sidewalks, perfect use. And sidewalks, they are ADA compatible, even made out of pervious concrete.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, that was yours. While you were out, it was brought up that rather than do a, just, which seemed rather arbitrary, from 75 to 50%, that we classified as up to 75% so that a choice can be made there and staff will come up with what is doing that. So I just want to let you know that because we're going to vote shortly, and I'm stretching, so he comes back.
Okay.
Anybody else have any discussion? First time, nobody has.
Yeah, I do have one.
Okay, that's good.
Just, we mean, of course, geez, it's just a clarification, if we do, Mr. City Attorney, if we do change it to what we said, up to 75%, does that change anything? We don't have to go back anyplace, right?
As long as you're understanding, you wouldn't be changing your technical manuals that apply currently now.
Right.
But only to outside of the ACC. I believe it's advertised probably enough that. I'm looking at the title, to permit the use of pervious pavement standards and credits citywide, so. I think you could say up to 75. Currently, just so we know, the current standards are when pervious concrete pavement is used in the development of a site, 25% of the area covered shall be regarded as impervious. That's the current, as applied in the ACC, 25% shall be considered. If other types of pervious surfaces are proposed, they will be reviewed, and if acceptable, approved on a case-by-case basis by the city. The credit for the pervious coverage shall be based on actual field performance data provided by the manufacturer. That's the current language in your technical manuals, applied to the ACC.
So it sounds to me like we can't go more than 75% at all. There's mandatory that we have to have 25% of the pond.
Currently, ACC, if you use pervious concrete pavement in the development of a site, 25% of the area covered by the pervious shall be regarded as impervious.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Member Stokel?
Just a clarification question. So is there, Ms. Bisaka, a matrix or a rubric to determine what would be 75% versus what would be 50%?
That's what engineers do.
Okay. All right, that's it, I.
That they look at all the things that Woody described to you on a case-by-case basis.
Yeah, I like that idea, whoever came up with it.
All right. Are there, there are no other cards, correct?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing, and somebody like to make a motion?
Oh. Sorry. So I would move to approve ordinance number 40-2019 relating to pervious pavement with the change of up to 75% credit.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? I'm hearing any. Roll call vote, please, clerk.
Vice Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes, passes unanimously. Next item, please.
Mayor, I just want to clarify, when we were talking about the up to 75, we're talking about 7.6.2.1 when it deals with pervious concrete pavement.
Right.
Because the current code, the other surfaces are evaluated on a case-by-case basis. So I just want to understand when we say up to 75%.
This is what I was going to do. Page 204, at the top of the ordinance on Section 30, 276-F, the additional language, pervious pavement standards provided for in the Stormwater Technical Manual may be utilized in all areas within the city up to 75% credit. Because I don't believe that's inconsistent with the technical manual and allows the flexibility. Are you okay?
Sure. So under what we're saying, then, when they use pervious concrete pavement, it could be up to 75%. So up to 25% could be regarded.
Yes.
And then, we're still going to do your case-by-case analysis of other types of pervious surfaces, but the credits shall not exceed.
Correct.
75 in that case either.
That's correct.
Is that consistent with your motion?
Yes.
Is it consistent with the second? Whoever made the second, second, okay. All right. Now, roll call.
You voted on this item?
Oh, that's right, we went through that. All right. Next item, please.
Yeah, they already, they voted.
Next item is ordinance number 41, 2019, reinstatement of Deferred Retirement Option Plan for General Employees. An ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending Chapter 15 pensions and retirement, Article 2, General Employees Pension Plan of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Titusville, amending Section 15, 105, benefits effective August 26, 2013. Amending. and thirteen, amending section fifteen-one-ten deferred retirement option plan, repealing all ordinances in conflict herewith, providing for severability of provisions, and providing for an effective date.
The proposed drop was negotiated through the collective bargaining process with Launa Union contingent on the ratification of the collective bargaining agreement, where the city and the union reached a tentative agreement to reinstate the proposed deferred retirement option plan drop for this Titusville general employees' plan. The criteria is described in your packet, and we do have an additional valuation from the actuary foster and foster of the impact of this drop, which is, don't impact to the city.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Busaka, do you have any comments on this?
No, Mr. De Niro might.
Sorry, I'm just so used to saying that to you.
I'm just, I'm channeling Mr. De Niro right now.
Any comment?
I don't have any.
Okay. Any questions, council of staff on this? I see none. Are there any cards on this, clerk?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay, we'll close the public, is there any council discussion on it? I see, okay, go right ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we, oops. Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance number forty-one, two thousand and nineteen, reinstatement of deferred retirement option plan drop for general employees.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Item E has been withdrawn. Next item, please.
Next item is F, ordinance number forty-four, two thousand and nineteen, plant nurseries and community commercial. This is the first of two public hearings. An ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, amending Code of Ordinances by amending chapter twenty-eight zoning, section twenty-eight, two fifteen, plant nursery, to establish plant nurseries as a limited use in the community commercial CC zoning district, and providing for repeal of the plant nursery pilot program, severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, an effective date, and incorporation into the land development regulations.
The planning and zoning commission considered this ordinance on November twentieth, two thousand and nineteen, recommended approval five-zero. This is the first of two required public hearings. The second public hearing is scheduled to be conducted by the city council on December tenth, two thousand and nineteen. Mayor, this does not require a vote. This is the first reading on ordinance number forty-four, two thousand and nineteen.
Council, do you have any other questions? And we don't have any cards on this item, so no vote is needed. Next item, please.
Yes, sir, this is the right-of-way vacation, you're on item nine G. The applicant, Woody Rice, on behalf of APM Properties Incorporated, is requesting the public rights of way be vacated. The applicant requests the right-of-way improvement alleyways be vacated for the purposes of developing townhomes. The following agencies were contacted and did not have any objections to their request, Florida Gas, Light and Power, ATT Spectrum, City of Titusville Water Resources, City of Titusville Public Works, and the Titusville Fire Department. Staff recommends approval of this request. The planning and zoning recommended approval six-zero at their November sixth, two thousand and nineteen meeting.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Busaka, this time, do you have any comments?
I'm here for questions.
Any questions from council to staff? I see none. I'll open the public hearings, are there any cards?
Yes, sir, the applicant, Woody Rice.
Sir.
Woody Rice, five oh five Indian River Avenue, and this request is for a townhome development that's on South Street, and I'm going to pass out a little handout. We had a, we had a pre-application meeting with the city, and this is sort of the concept plan at this stage. And the alleys actually go right through the center, as shown in your staff report. They're only ten foot wide. A typical road in the City of Titusville requires a fifty-foot right-of-way, an alley requires a twenty-foot right-of-way, so they're not really used for those. And then, all the utility companies actually had no problem with this vacation. But this vacation is required, really, to lay out the site, get it right. It's going to improve this area tremendously. This is a market-rate development. It's not low income, it's market rate, which I think is very important for the area. And we just need this to continue, to get this development done. So we appreciate your support.
Any questions of Mr. Rice? Thank you, sir. I see, we're, cards, okay. I'll close the public hearing, council discussion, anybody have any questions, or? Yes, sir, go right ahead, Vice Mayor.
There we go. No real question, I just want to say, when I first heard of this project, I think it's the right place, the right project, and the right time, and I hope that it is successful. So I think it's, as you noted, it's a good project for that area. I think it's going to add a lot.
Very good, thank you, sir. Member Jordan? Go right ahead.
All right, Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the right-of-way application number two dash two thousand and nineteen, request to vacate our public right-of-way.
Second.
I have a motion and a second.
I'd also like to say, that is resolution number fifty-two, two thousand and nineteen.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, and a resolution. Roll call vote, please, clerk.
Member Jordan?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
You all have a good Thanksgiving.
You, too. Next item, please.
Next item is ordinance's first reading, item ten A, ordinance number forty-three, two thousand and nineteen, an ordinance of the City of Titusville, amending chapter fifteen pensions and retirement, article three, police officers and firefighters' pension plan of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Titusville, amending section fifteen-two-two-two benefits effective June thirtieth, two thousand and thirteen, amending section fifteen-two-thirty-three deferred retirement option plan, repealing all ordinances in conflict herewith, providing for severability of provisions, and providing an effective date.
This is the first reading. The public hearing is scheduled to be conducted by a city council on December tenth, two thousand and nineteen, at six-thirty, and mayor, there was no vote required on this first reading of ordinance forty-three, two thousand and nineteen.
Staff, any comments? Any questions of staff, council? There are no cards, no vote. Next item, please.
Next item is ten B, ordinance number forty-five, two thousand and nineteen, an ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, updating the five-year capital improvement schedule of the comprehensive plan of the City of Titusville for the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-four horizon relating to the capital improvement element, and providing for an effective date.
This is the first reading. A public hearing is scheduled to be conducted by a city council on December tenth, two thousand and nineteen, at six-thirty. This is the first reading of ordinance forty-five, two thousand and nineteen, and mayor, there's no vote required on this particular item.
Yes, sir. Staff, any comments? Council, any questions? Clerk, there are no cards on this?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay, there's no vote. Next item, please.
Next item is item C, ordinance number forty-six, two thousand and nineteen, relating to wetland surveys. An ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, amending chapter twenty-nine special districts and overlays of the Code of Ordinances, section twenty-nine-seventy-one intent in chapter thirty-four procedures, section thirty-four-fifty-five master plan submittal, to include the requirement for a formal wetlands determination that is valid at the time of submittal to the city, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, for an effective date, and incorporation into the code.
The planning and zoning commission reviewed this ordinance on November twentieth, two thousand and nineteen, and tabled to the next meeting to allow TEC to review the standards. If council tables this item to allow TEC input, the item should be tabled to the regular city council meeting on January twenty-eighth, two thousand and ten, at six-thirty. And this is the first reading of ordinance forty-six, two thousand and nineteen. The public hearing is scheduled to be conducted by city council on December tenth, two thousand and nineteen, beginning at six-thirty. Mayor, there's no vote required on this item.
Yes, sir, and there's no necessity to table it because of the dates, the way it works out, right?
Sorry, T, correction, planning and zoning did recommend, they did table the item and recommended that it, the item be sent to TEC. So if you choose to do that, you will need to table the item to allow that to happen.
Okay, so unless we do that... Member Nelson, I'm not sure. I don't think it's necessary because of the dates.
Well, I was just thinking, if, it says if we want TEC to provide the input to P and Z, then we need to table it to January twenty-eighth. So I would, twenty-ten? Twenty-ten? Twenty-nineteen?
Twenty-twenty.
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 No, we already caught that one.
I had to check my glasses there, so that we table it to January twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty.
So you have conducted your first reading, so what you're tabling is the public hearing to January twenty-eighth.
Correct.
Second. I have a motion and a second, but I have another, you've already spoken, right?
Yes, sir.
Member Stokel?
If we table it, are we going to have to pay for re-advertising fees?
No.
Okay, then I'm okay.
Member Jordan?
The only concern I have is, I think this is going to be our first case where we're actually sending something to TEC, so it'll be interesting to see what happens with this. I don't think there is a requirement for the P and Z to go with whatever TEC says, but if the P and Z decides, well, we're going to, you know, go with their vote or whatever they say, that could end up being a challenge. So I'm interested to see how this process is going to work, so, thank you, sir.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Yes, sir, go right ahead.
I just want, as I seconded that, I wasn't missed, I didn't miss that. I felt the same way, and I think it's, it could be a very positive thing. You know, we were speaking, and I think I heard Member Nelson earlier say something that we need you to bring this to us or whatever. I think sometimes we're looking for more from our boards, and I think this might be a way to do that, but yes, I think we also have to be aware, is this going to slow everything down? I don't know, but I'm looking forward to it.
Okay, any other comments?
I'd just like to ask, do we know if the, it says in the agenda that the public hearing is scheduled to be conducted by city council on December tenth, two thousand and nineteen. Do we know, was that actually advertised for that date, or is there an intent to advertise it for that date?
It was advertised. This is my thought. We can hold the first reading tonight, and then on the December tenth, we can table the public hearing, and that way, or we will have to just put it on here and table it anyway.
That would be my suggestion, because it was, the public hearing was advertised for the tenth, so anybody who was interested in speaking on that item, if you tried to table it tonight, that wouldn't happen. I would suggest, if you want to send it to TEC, give that direction tonight, that you want to go to TEC on December tenth at the public hearing, you could then table it to a time certain in January.
You want to repeat that?
Makes sense to me.
What he said.
So the direction is...
Actually, what you said.
And mayor and council, you have directed it to go to TEC through P and Z back to you, so, and we'll just do the administrative tabling at the next meeting.
Perfect. So we, we need to vote on that?
No, no, sir, you already did.
Okay, all right.
No, I would just suggest you might vote on sending it to TEC unless you have consensus, because...
They did have consensus.
Do we have a consensus? Everybody, yes, we have a consensus. Very good, next item.
No, we did have one card on that item on Tennessee, but the card is not here, the person is not here, it's Mr. My Jack, yep.
And item, item D has been withdrawn, correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Next item, then.
Next item is E, which is rezoning number three, two thousand and nineteen, and ordinance number forty-nine, two thousand and nineteen, for first reading. An ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, amending ordinance number five, nineteen ninety-three, the City of Titusville, Florida, by amending the zoning map, made a partisan ordinance by reference by replacing the present general use GU zoning district to community commercial CC zoning for a three-point-two-seven acre property located at twenty-nine fifty-five Columbia Boulevard, and providing for an effective date.
This is the first reading. The public hearing is scheduled to be conducted by city council on December tenth, two thousand and nineteen, at six-thirty. Planning and zoning commission recommended approval of this, action five-zero. This is the first reading of rezone number three dash two thousand and nineteen, will not require a vote, mayor, but we do have one card on the item.
Okay, clerk, would you call the card, please?
Brooks Stickler.
Good evening, Brooks Stickler, the applicant, one eighty-nine South Orange Avenue, Orlando, Florida. We're here on behalf of Launch Federal Credit Union. I just wanted to clarify one thing. One of the items on there was referencing that it was going to be a bank. It is actually a financial institution, so it will be for Launch Credit Federal Union, but it will not be a place where you bring money into the Old X Lodge. It is actually being utilized as their, one of their financial hubs for loans and things of that nature. So just wanted to clarify that. We're reusing the existing facility. It is no improvements outside of the building. The existing building is bringing tenant improvements for new offices and call centers, and then also conference rooms, so we, if there is any questions, I am obviously here for you.
You took a tour of our town today.
I'm sorry?
You took a tour of our town today?
Oh, no, I've been here many times.
Have you?
Yes.
Okay, well, were you over at Space View Park earlier?
No, I was not.
No? Okay. It's right next to my house. That wasn't you? I thought it was you two guys.
No.
No? Okay.
I thought I was, I wasn't sure where we were going with that.
It was two guys that looked remarkably like you, is all I've got to say.
No, sir, that was not me.
I've been looking at it all night, and I said, same guys. But anyway, let's get on with the show. Vice Mayor.
No, I'm sorry, that was...
Member Stokel?
Yep. So is this going to be like a headquarters-type deal, or?
It's not the Launch Federal Credit Union headquarters, but this is going to be one of their office complexes to start. They're trying to move more of their, you know, bring more jobs to the area, and then also make it more of a presence.
So are they relocating, or just offering a new?
I believe this is a, this is new.
It is new, but they're also consolidating several operations, yep.
Well, thank you for reutilizing one of our buildings, and we're hopeful for this, so, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, this is no vote, so go on to the next item. Oh, the next item is old business, we have none. New business, selection of a vice mayor. And I understand I nominate the person, and I'm very pleased to nominate the present vice mayor, Diesel, because he's done a wonderful job on backing me up, and I really appreciate that.
Can I do the voting?
Yes, sir, we do.
Can I do that?
Yes, sir.
It is my...
I'm sorry, wait, she had her light on.
Oh.
Oh, that was a report.
Okay.
Let me, let me, thank you. It is certainly my pleasure to nominate Mr. Dan Diesel as a vice mayor. I think, I think we got a great team, to tell you the truth, and I don't want anything to change, so I'm very sentimental about that, so I, that is my motion to nominate Mr. Diesel.
I have a motion, and I have a second.
Second.
Only one person now. Which one are you going to give it to?
She gets mad at me, though.
She can't reach it.
Oh, that's true. You got it. I have a motion and a second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All who was in favor, say yes.
Yes.
And the opposed, like, sign, passes very unanimously.
Mayor, my...
Have a word? Yes, sir.
I just want to thank you guys, and I totally agree with what you just said, Member Jordan, and I think it's been said many times. Gosh, what an honor and a privilege to be sitting up here with this group. There are times that we have, have some angst coming our way, and there's times that we don't all agree... don't all agree on everything. Tonight was an example of that. We don't leave here feeling any less respect or, or friendship, or whatever it may be. And the point I'm making is, what an honor to be here. And again, I, I've said this before, and there's not a lot of people here to hear it. Officers, I'm glad you're here. I.
Our cheering section.
It's an honor to work next to the mayor. In, in some ways, maybe I'm getting too old for this, but I don't think so, looking to him as a mentor of how to handle yourself in situations, and how to be the gentleman you need to be in, in every situation. And, and I've said this before, again, I've known him for many, many years, and I've never known him to do anything but be classy and professional, and I, and I'm just blessed to sit over here and, and take it all in. And I can say the same for each of you. Professional and, and very full of class, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
And I want to thank you. That's very, very nice. I totally agree with you. We have a great group here, and you're absolutely right. We don't always have to vote the same way, and nobody gets upset about it or causes any, any issues, so I'm going to thank you all for being such a great board, counsel. All right, the next is to, for the Community Redevelopment Agency to designate a chair and a vice chair, and you guys did it. The chair and the vice chair, you go, yes.
Okay, I think it's tradition that the mayor is the chair and the vice mayor is the vice chair of the CRA, so that's my motion.
I have.
Jeez. Oh.
You got this one. Is that fair?
Thank you.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, like sign, passes unanimously. Update council appointments to serve on outside agencies. As somebody just mentioned, I think it might have been you, Member Jordan, we've got a, we've got a good thing going here, and it used to be we go down each one each individually, but if everybody is happy with what they're doing, I would just as well stay where we are. I see everybody, we have consensus on that, and so we need to go no further.
I agree.
Oh, okay, I thought you, I thought you were asking a question, I'm sorry.
Well, I was being ready to ask you something.
See?
I was just being ready to ask you something.
I, I heard you had a turkey the other day.
I made a turkey?
You met one.
I've met lots of turkeys. Didn't you read the paper?
I heard this was, well, a two, I was going to say a two-legged turkey.
Yes. No, you can say that, but it wouldn't make much sense with it. I did, I had the honor to go to the VFW Post four-two-two-eight, I believe, and be the first mayor in Titusville, not the first president, presidents have done this for a long time, but the first mayor in Florida, rather, to do that, and they're going to do that on an annual basis from now on, at least that's what they said. And it did get, I got on the, you probably saw it on the, in the paper, right?
Yeah.
And after fourteen years, that's the first time I've been quoted on the front page for doing the turkey. So, but it was, it was really kind of fun. It was slightly tongue-in-cheek, and, and the vice mayor was there, but we had, we had a good time.
I had my grandson there. Had my grandson there as well, and the mayor even called him out, and he was so excited, and the turkey was more excited.
Yeah, I was going to say.
It was an outstanding event with some great people, and the mayor did a great job.
Well, thank you very much. Any more to that question?
What, did the turkey thank you?
Something about. It did, it actually did, right in the middle of his speech.
He did, he did, several times, actually. I'm assuming that was the thank you. Okay, where are we now? We are petitions and requests, is there, do either of you wish to come up and say anything?
Good.
All right. Mayor and council reports, you have my report in writing. Is there anybody from council that would like to make a report? Oh, yes, sir, you're there.
I, I just want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, and I'm very thankful for a lot of things in my life. We're very blessed people, but I think most of all, we're very blessed to be on this dais with the rest of you souls, for sure. I think you've got good spirits, and you just want to serve the people, and, yeah, we may get criticized sometime, but I, I don't think we get criticized a great deal.
No, we don't. I kind of got a little upset tonight because I thought he was making a reference to the council, and I'm not standing.
Well, I, I appreciated you doing that, I said, you go out there. For sure, so.
Well, he didn't mean it that way.
He didn't mean it that way, that's for sure, so, but anyway, I, I just appreciate everyone, and I hope you have a safe holiday, and eat as much as you want, and come back for the next season, for sure.
Don't get her near that turkey, would you?
Yeah, she might eat it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, and I just echo what, what Member Jordan said. Have a happy Thanksgiving, and I hope everybody stays safe.
Yes.
Anybody else have any comments they'd like to make? If not, I'll call this meeting.
Hang on, sir.
Oh, sorry, sorry, almost left you out, didn't I?
Oops. You can hold on to the gavel, but.
Yes, sir, city manager, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir, we had a software issue, and publishing my report is not included on your thumb drive, but we've handed you a hard copy of it. I have no action items for you tonight. There is an update on CPA three dash two thousand nineteen transmittal, and a list of special events coming out, as well as we have published our special events, Titusville talking points that goes through all the special events throughout the holiday season, which is another first-class item that we put together for our public. So, subject to any of your questions, that concludes my report.
City attorney?
I'm ready.
All right. With that, I will declare this meeting adjourned.